It's seven o'clock and I'd like to call to order the Select Board meeting for the town of Carlisle. We will start, thank you. We'll start by actually doing a, to see if we have quorum. I thought we were going to have, Barney it looks like is on, yeah Barney's phone. So why don't we take a roll call vote to start the meeting? We'll do it in alphabetical order. Barney, if you're on the line, if you'd like to start us off.
Or not.
Or not?
She's muted.
Okay. Barney, if that is you on the line, if you'd like to start us with a roll call vote, please. All right. Well, we will continue and if Barney, you can hear this, just please chime in when you get this. We'll do a roll call vote to start in any event. So Snell, aye.
Reed, aye. Well, here.
Triola, aye. Modell, aye.
Okay. And Barney, did you hear that? If you are online, please notice that you're here for the meeting.
Or chat us.
Or maybe you send me a text or something and let me know.
Is everybody muted? Is that something we're doing on our end?
It may be that.
It's possible.
Well, it looks like she came off mute there.
Yeah, she came off.
Aye, can you hear now?
All right, yeah, we can hear you. All right.
Oh, great, I'm here.
Yep, and because you're a member, you know, as far as the Zoom goes, please, you can keep her unmuted throughout the thing, but you're welcome to go on mute, obviously, Barney, if you want. So we're gonna, our agenda tonight, we're gonna have community input briefly, then appointments and resignations. We're gonna have a tax classification hearing for fiscal year 2025. We're gonna move on to the fire station owners, project manager goal discussion. Then we're gonna have a town administrator bylaw discussion, financial policy amendment approval. This will be to discuss the employee expense reimbursement. And then we'll discuss the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission for a license renewal. We'll have the town administrators report, warrants and minutes approval, cemetery deed approval, liaison reports, and then at the end, we will again have community input. It's possible I will include some community input on some of the other items if there's interest from the public. So, you know, you could indicate as such as we're going through. But I will start with general open community input. The way we do this is we limit it to one minute. And if, at my discretion, I can add an additional minute, but I would like to ask you to please keep your comments succinct and, you know, convey what you're trying to convey. So if there are any initial comments, seeing none in the room, I'd look to Zoom, but we'll, is this everyone that's online for the Zoom? Yeah. All right. I don't see any comments or anyone indicating they have.
Lost John.
We did lose John Lavery, but.
He's here.
Is he coming here? Is he online?
No, I'm here Travis. I'm saving my comments, if you'll allow them, during the discussion of the fire station.
Yeah, I think we will open up a short period of time for some additional comments. So if that, but it's not a long period, so.
I understand.
But we did receive, we received something from you today, the Select Board did as well, so.
And read it.
In Reddit.
In Reddit.
Okay. So moving on from here, we're gonna do appointments and resignations. And the first was the amendment to the Transfer Station Action Committee Charter, which is reducing its membership. I don't know if there's anything further that, Ryan, you wanted to discuss on that?
It's a request from them, it's just for quorum purposes.
So I move to amend the Transfer Station Action Committee Charter as included in the packet. And I'll just say from nine to, nine members to seven members.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion among the board?
I think, I think this is a good move.
Okay.
Is there a, is there a, I wasn't part of this committee when this was set up. Is there a expected lifetime on this or is this an ongoing committee?
I think they're thinking about phasing themselves out, but I'm gonna let Ryan weigh in if he knows more than I do.
Just that these, the Select Board, I think, when there's no longer recommendations or actions, would consider dissolving it, but they believe for sure that there's still more to do.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, so we've had a second. I guess we'll take a roll call vote. We'll start with Barney.
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Triola, aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous. Go ahead.
Move to appoint Jennifer Gagni to the position of Transportation and Services Coordinator for the Council on Aging and Human Services effective November 27th, 2024.
Okay Barney, seconded. Is there anything to discuss, Ryan, on this? We saw in our packet.
Just introducing Jennifer to the, to the Select Board. She has a tremendous amount of customer service experience and also management experience. So her ability to manage the, I would frankly say she's overqualified to manage the transportation staff here and the programming for transportation. So her additional skillset will allow for more redundancy and resilience in the Council on Aging office. So highly qualified, wants to be here, talked it through, we had a ton of candidates, it was very competitive, and we are, we are happy to present Jennifer to you for appointment.
Great. So roll call vote, start with Barney.
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Triola, aye.
Great, so that passes. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Try to stop in and say hi tomorrow.
So, yeah, so we have the tax classification hearing, but because that's a hearing, I'm gonna wait till 7:15. I was thinking we could do either the cemetery deeds or the warrants and minutes rather than start on the TA report because that.
Sure.
Decide which one you want.
So cemetery deeds, let's go ahead and get that. Go through those.
I move to transfer land in the public burial ground at the Green Cemetery described as follows, lot D 394 Graves 1 and 2 to Richard and Barbara Fine at 435 Brook Street.
Hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Barney, we're gonna do a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Triola, aye.
Okay.
Do the minutes?
Yep, we'll do the minutes next for October 15th. Oh, you, did you want to get that?
We can do those at some point, too.
Yeah, well, it looks like we'll have time.
Okay, great.
Thank you for.
I move approval, actually, I'll do them all three, of the minutes of October 15th, November 7th, and November 12th as presented in the packet.
Did we have any revisions? I don't know if they went in.
I didn't.
I thought they were actually pretty good.
Very good. Good opening.
Yeah, they were succinct, you know, they had all.
I'd like to note that I wrote the October 15th ones.
Did you? Those are the ones I was gonna mention.
We should do that. Each time, we should guess who wrote the minutes.
All right. So roll call vote, starting with Barney.
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Triola, aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous. And then it looks like, Scott, you mentioned that we have some ARPA discussion.
Yes. Let me pass out these hard copies. So I had met with Kelly last week to review remaining projects. And based on those, that meeting and conversations with the project owners, I'd like to move the following adjustments that are in front of you, which essentially would bring the available ARPA funds, which are currently at, available at $122,156.8 to $146,333.64. And again, these adjustments are simply based on what, what these projects need, and essentially these would close out these projects. So this has all been discussed with the project owners and is really administrative in nature.
I just had one question.
Yes.
About number one, the Health Department operations.
Yes.
I was at their meeting and I thought they had voted to return all of the funds that were left over and I thought.
These are all of the funds.
I thought $21,000 was what was left over.
No, they have $3,000 left.
Ah, okay.
So essentially, by making this budget adjustment, we're gonna zero out the balance and effectively close the project, close the project, yeah.
So that's what, I didn't understand what they were.
Yeah.
How much they had left over.
Yeah, they had roughly $3,000 and part of that was based on state reimbursements for vaccination clinics. And, and this was just, Kelly had followed up with Linda to ensure that there was one remaining invoice of like $50 that's been accounted for, so.
Okay.
So this should be good.
Barney, did you have any questions on the ARPA?
No, no, thank you. And well done, Scott. I know it's a lot of details. Thank you.
Only well done if we spend $146. I think we'll find a way.
We will, we will.
Well, can I get a motion then, or did you already make it?
No, I didn't make the motion, so go ahead, Kate.
Well, I, I move that Select Board amends the following ARPA project budgets. The Health Department operations in response to COVID-19, staffing and supplies, ARPA reducing it from $24,000 to $21,023.21. The Stop the Bleed training workshops, ARPA project, reduced from $2,800 to $1,599.
Twenty-three cents, sorry.
And the GIS implementation, ARPA project, reduced from $87,500 to $67,500.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. Barney, you wanna start us off with a roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Triola, aye.
Okay, super.
Thank you.
Well, hold on, we've got four minutes. Can we do the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission? Or does that have to wait till the time?
No.
Is that good?
He's not coming, so you'd be the only one interested, I think.
So I move pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, to approve the retail license renewal for a package store. Sell wines and malt to Art Specialties LLC, doing business as Art Specialties, located at 8 Lowell Street, Carlisle, Mass., 01741 for calendar year 2025.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions about this? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Triola, aye.
We are cruising through these things.
Thank you all. Good meeting. Happy Thanksgiving.
I have one, I won the light and one of the warrants.
Okay.
Just a quick thing. So I saw Jim O'Shea, it's kind of for Ryan and I didn't check for Jim, but Jim O'Shea wrote this little letter. I know that EDCO dissolved and I'm just trying to kind of follow what he was saying. So were you familiar with the EDCO stuff?
Not enough, not enough to answer questions on it, no.
Okay, all right, then maybe.
I can take your questions.
Well, I briefly reviewed it with Kelly, because I signed the warrant, and she, this was kind of the final step in.
Right, so they gave us some money, but then we have some bills we have to pay, I just didn't understand.
I wish I could remember her explanation of it.
Well, we got, it's, looks like, I know that all the, I know that all the member towns had to deal with the, all the crap, right? And, and it sounds like maybe they had, I'm guessing they had some cash.
I think they dispersed.
They dispersed it proportionally to something. So we got, you know, $6,700. And then everybody had to pay some bills.
Right.
That's the part I kind of, did they like divvy them out? Do you have an idea?
I guess, I, my understanding was this kind of.
Did each guy pay what they had to, they would have paid for their students.
This is what, it's like the final dispersment or the last step in this process.
Okay.
And I believe it was, I know the money was dispersed and we're paying these things and this is.
Okay, that's good.
I don't have specifics. We can follow up on that.
Well, I mean, it doesn't really matter, we did it. It just sounds like, so, the money we got sort of washed out with the hunt, with Amoresco, so that's kind of a wash.
Yep.
And then 6,000, 18,000, 28, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, about 70,000 went away, right? We had to pay that. And that was our final exit. And now we're done.
That's, but I believe, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Kelly, Kelly can answer this question.
All right, I guess.
I will, I will get her to send you something.
Okay.
Since we have one more minute, Mr. Ten, one other question.
Well, it's.
Short question.
One minute.
Okay, so the, the, the Old North Bridge thing that we were personally invited to, I also have in my calendar a placeholder for a Carlisle celebration that day, but it wouldn't be the same time as that, right?
No.
Is that a yes or?
Should be staged. I believe Carlisle is watching on.
Six AM is usually the Carlisle and then they go to 8:30. This one's 8:30.
Okay, so we can now repeat it then.
Yes, if, I mean, is anyone here, no, are you planning to attend?
I think I would like to attend.
Okay, just curious, so I'll make sure.
I don't want, I don't want, I won't be around for the 500th, so.
You might be.
Kate, how about you?
I'm just looking, I, I, you know, if I'm here, I would certainly want to be there.
So we, it gives a little email address.
Yeah, but I can do it for, on behalf of the board and we'll, I'll tell, but I just wanted to know who was gonna, Barney, do you plan to be at the 250th celebration? We were invited formally by the Town of Concord to be present as an honored guest at the parade and ceremonies in Concord.
We're apparently playing the British soldiers in the reenactment.
And the date on that, is that actually gonna be on the 19th or is it on the weekend?
This is on the 19th, which is Saturday.
Okay.
8:30 AM.
Oh, oh, right, that's right, it falls into Saturday. I, right now, I'm not sure. Sorry, I'm a maybe.
You're a maybe, definite maybe. All right, so four and a half. Well, Kate hasn't said, but.
I know, I, I'm, it's in my calendar.
You're in? Okay, good. All right.
Thank you. We'll take care of the others.
Okay, so it is, it is 7:16, we're a little late, but, but you, we have scheduled on here until 7:45, so just, so you know, you have a half hour.
I'm gonna keep the same pace that you all have with, with starting the meeting, so I'm trying to keep it brief.
All right, so if you want it, we're gonna turn it over to you, if you want to introduce yourself and then walk us through your presentation would be great.
Sure.
Do we need to open the hearing? Is there a formal request, like requirement to open it? No, okay. This is pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56.
Thank you very much for having me and on behalf of Ken Masella, the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, my name is Brian McDonald, I'm the Principal Assessor, and I'm here to present the four classification options, tax classification options for fiscal 2025. For those attending remotely via Zoom, I will let everybody know that the documents that I will be discussing will be summarized, they go into greater detail, and they are all available at the Assessors page on the Town of Carlisle website. So whether you are attending live or listening to a recording, all of the documents are available and have been as of yesterday.
He's just working on the audio.
All right.
I get it.
So.
Does it work?
So the four classification hearing agenda, there'll be four votes that the Select Board will be required to make today. First will be the selection of minimum residential factor, that's the selection of the tax rate. Granted, we can open space discount, that will be very brief in its summary, as there are no parcels that qualify. The granting of a residential exemption, and the fourth is the granting of a small commercial exemption, which will also will be brief. So first, I just run through the calculation of the single tax rate. So we begin with the tax levy, that is the budget approved at town meeting, net of estimated receipts, we have total assessed value of community as established and approved, established by the Assessors Department, approved by the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, multiplied by 1,000, we get the single tax rate. So this is the budget net of estimated receipts. This is the total value of the various property classes. You have residential, open spaces, you can see we have zero, which is why we won't go through vote number two, commercial, industrial, personal property value.
Personal property.
That results in a single tax rate calculation of $13.22. So moving forward here, so just a couple of comments with regards to the valuation adjustments made for fiscal 2025. The adminable changes to days on market, slight decrease in the median list price, sale price indicates a stable market conditions. Just as a note, my observations for going for calendar year 2024 for fiscal '26 is that they have started to increase slightly, so we're not seeing a change downward in the market, just all the people at home.
You choose, okay, so these are the two most recently completed years.
So this, yes, this would be calendar year '22 and calendar year '23. Those would be effective for fiscal '24 and '25.
So not the fiscal.
Yeah, because we, we are required by law to look at a full calendar year's worth of sales. So excuse me. Just another, you know, sale to list ratio, which is the, the percentage that really is a measurement of the buyer and seller sentiment and whether they are in agreement with where the market, the perceived market value at 101%. This is indicating, once again, a similar buyer and seller expectations, not the rapid rate of appreciation that we saw over the last three years. But what we have seen is in stabilization and the comments I've made about in calendar year '24 is this is the new norm. As we've seen from 2020, this is really the, the establishment of a base market since my arrival here.
Are you saying that, Frank, as it's stabilizing as opposed to fluctuating?
Yep, I'm not, I am seeing, you're not seeing the rapid appreciation that we saw in '20 to '21 as, you know, 20% under valued coming into fiscal '23. We are not seeing that at all with more, what I would characterize as typical market-based adjustments somewhere between.
And those last two lines, the 10-point adjustment in '22 in the ASR is because of that, right? Because you were reacting to that.
Yes, so that's a measurement, the beginning ASR is where those sales are headed into the following year. In order to meet statistical standards, they require that 10% adjustment, right around, I'm supposed to be between 90 to 110%. 95% is, I think, really the sweet spot where, where we, I like to be, as it has leeway for both up and down. As you can see, we came in at a 93 beginning for fiscal '25 using 23 sales, and the ending assessment to sales ratio is right around a 96%.
It looks like gross living area has gone down, which is interesting.
It's just the sales that occur.
Small sample size.
Yes, 100%. Thank you.
I imagine a lot has to do with K's walk probably being.
No, I don't think, this is strictly single-family sales, it, but I think what David touched on is really the point, it really depends on what is being sold. Eight-deck house sales in calendar 2023, they tend to be on the smaller side, smaller than the median gross living area in Carlisle. You know, when you have a cluster of undersized homes like that, that can skew these, these statistics that you see here.
What is gross living area, is that total square feet versus?
That is the total heated finished living area within the dwelling.
So simply the drop from.
Think that that accounts for the, yeah, the drop in median as well, because.
As I was stating, I think getting back to what David was saying is really the point here, limited sample size, we've gone, I think in calendar '21 for fiscal '23, we had approximately 73 sales. So when you, when you see such a drop in the sales volume, you don't know what your sample size will indicate. I think what I tried to, to indicate is that 2024 sales through October, the 41 sales that we've had, have indicated that those numbers will be increasing from where they are. Once again, you're seeing a lot of newer construction come on, which definitely exceed the median 3200 square feet significantly.
Exceed the median.
So, once again, I think we already touched on the assessment sales ratio, you have just some quick notes, the adjustments made to land across the board. Building value adjustments were isolated to the three largest building styles, colonial contemporary deckhouse. The average single-family now is up to approximately $1.27 million. And the total new growth for, or to the local property tax base is $327,787.
That's like a quarter of a house, what is?
That is not value, that is actual tax dollars.
Oh, that's the new growth of tax dollars.
Yes, that's.
Not, not, not the new growth.
That's not the tax revenue.
That doesn't buy you a lot now. No, that is the actual, to the levy.
So can I multiply that by the mill rate to get the house value of new growth?
Yes, that'd be quite a nice.
What is this, 13 over 1,000 or something? What is the?
Yep, that includes all new homes as well as additions, significant renovations, pools, barns.
Is the mill rate, it's 13, right?
13.
Well, that would be, new growth, this is interesting, the new growth value is always based off of the last, previous year's tax rate, so that'd be 1333.
In terms of the assessment process for homes in Carlisle, I, again, a few years ago, I know, I think when you came on, there was, there was a lot of outdated assessments, and I think that process, for, for some homes, particularly deckhouses, has resulted in higher assessments and a higher tax bill. Where, where do we stand right now with the whole assessment status of the town in terms of, are we caught up on assessments? Should more people expect more regular assessments? Because I've had questions about that in terms of individuals' tax bill versus the.
Yeah, that is a great question. We have made great strides towards increasing the compliance of the 10-year cyclical reinspection requirement.
So it's 10 years you're required to.
Yes, do a site inspection. We had, the department had gone into arrears significantly, and I will touch upon in the last slide that I, that I present tonight, as to the progress the department has made through the efforts of both myself and a third-party contractor that we, that is continuing to inspect now.
And I'll add one comment to that, which is, I mean, the statistic is one thing. Our compliance is, is really, really close to where we want it to be. But beyond that, quality of the inspections, I think, is far better than what we had in the past. We replaced the contractor we were working with, I think we're getting a far better inspection now. We had reports of issues with prior contractor we were using, we replaced him, and I, I think the results have been very much improved. Hard to, you know, show statistics on that, but from what, but we have a lot of anecdotal evidence to say that that is the case.
Brad, I thought you were doing inspections.
I am doing them as well, yes. I have personally inspected over 400 homes on my own. The outside contractor is closing in on 300, I think. He is also a former assessor, a former licensed, a previous licensed appraiser in Mass., as well as a retired employee from the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services. There's no one that is more qualified to do this work than the person that we're contracting with now. So.
That's in a hugely important role, because I think, I, you know, I know in, in talking with neighbors and people who might come speak to the Select Board, a lot, you know, there are a lot of people that directly they're seeing, you know, they're, they're getting reassessed or, you know, they're, they're doing a project, and they don't really understand necessarily the, the tax process. And they say, my taxes went up 20%, why is the town spending 20% more? And trying to detangle the overall budget process from individual tax bills and how it all, how it all works is hugely important. And obviously, falling behind on that stuff is, is, and catching up is a volatile process.
We have an initiative to address that too, Scott, which we'll cover at the tail end of the presentation.
Yes, we will, all of the questions you've just had will be answered.
Great.
With a, a new release and I will, a document that we have put together.
Awesome.
And I will address that in my final slide this evening.
Great. Keep going.
Sure, go right ahead. Okay, moving right on. Okay, moving right on.
First start of which you're ending the slide.
Sure, the first, the first option is the selection of minimum residential factor. So what you have, the classification to options table to your left, this ranges, selection of a single tax rate, which is for a residential factor of one, which is the top line of the table, that would result in a tax rate of thirteen dollars and twenty-two cents and an average single-family tax bill of sixteen dollars and eighty, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, excuse me. Or you can vote for a variety of various factors here, this with shift would, would pass on additional tax burden onto the commercial industrial property class. Unfortunately, in Carlisle, you have run into this scenario where you only have, where residential open space accounts for ninety-eight point one six percent of the entire valuation of the entire community. The shift to the max of one fifty would have minimal effect and save just the average single-family home a hundred and fifty-eight dollars while increasing the average commercial industrial property tax bill approximately five thousand. So with that said, the Board of Assessors makes the recommendation that the select board vote on the acceptance of a residential factor of one. And a single tax rate for all property classes.
And that's the current status.
That has been the status here forever.
Can I make that motion now?
Yes, go ahead.
May I move the select board for the purpose of setting fiscal twenty-two four property tax rate to approve a residential factor of one, thereby establishing a uniform tax rate with no difference between residential open space property classes and commercial industrial personal property, property classes.
Second.
Okay, um, is there any discussion among the board? I can't see Barney on there, so if you do have any questions, Barney, just chime in or you can always text me and let me know that you're, you're trying to talk.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, great.
This is what we've done in memorial, in memorial, so.
Yeah, just give them the makeup of the town.
Yes, makes no sense to do anything other than this.
Okay, so it sounds like the board's in agreement, but we need to vote on this, so take a roll call vote?
Roll out.
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Triola, aye.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Uh, just a quick note here is I have made this part of the presentation, but I also have made this available electronically online as well. So, so the last ten years in the tax rate and average single-family tax bill history.
I have to say, right, it's the first time in my career, I think, I've seen a time-phase chart where the first, where the current years on the left.
Call me that way.
It's challenging my brain.
I do apologize, I, I will take that under consideration, yes, I apologize.
No, David's the right, right, David. I'm like, okay, what's going on?
One of the things I just want to point out before we move on is if you look at the revaluation, we're coming up on a revaluation year and how we're setting this up for a more balanced and equitable assessments here. So what I want to point out is these two years that are highlighted and bold are the revaluation years. You can see the significant adjustments that were made during those two years, fourteen and almost eleven percent. Then you look at the previous year's adjustments and how modest they were, you know, at only one percent, I can tell you that those were really falling on the lower end of the assessment of sales ratio. What that does, that sets up for significant increases that come in that fifth year when there's a higher level of scrutiny.
Yeah.
I think what, I think that by being consistent, as I've tried to be in keeping up that assessment to sales.
Twenty-six, you won't have that.
So this, with the, the slowing of the market, still appreciating but at a lower rate, but also keeping these assessments up to a, a consistent level, the assessment of sales ratio should really set that up for what I'm anticipating to be our three or four percent market-based adjustment. I know we're at a ninety-four now, the revaluation year does require a higher level closer to one than I would typically have, but I think through the efforts that have been made over the last few years, I think that we're set up nicely to see more balanced adjustments and also keeping those values fair and equitable across board. Did anybody have any questions? I apologize.
I, I want to, I, I just want to ask you a question, even though we've already passed it. A town that would have a CIP shift would have a much wider base in all kinds of classes?
Correct.
Wouldn't treat everybody the same, is that the basic?
Yeah, if we did it here, it'd be highly discriminative.
But I mean, if you had a town where there was a lot of industrial or a lot of commercial, it would make more sense.
I think base is about ten, maybe eight to, little, minimum of eight to ten. By that, then you're going to actually provide meaningful tax relief to the residential class if you were to shift.
So that's the thing, you give the residence break, that's like what Michelle Wu was trying to do?
They're actually going to, this happened before they sunsetted this, where they're actually going to exceed, and now Carlisle's at one fifty because that's where they're capped at. There are some communities that cap, it's capped at one point seven five.
Sorry, when you say one fifty, what, what?
Sure.
What's the metrics there?
I apologize. So what it is, how do they come up with this new tax rate or how do they figure this out? They're taking the single tax rate.
Yeah.
Multiplying this, so one fifty would be one point five times the single tax rate would be the new tax rate for the commercial industrial property class. You take the total value of the commercial property class, multiply it by the new tax rate, that's what they would contribute and the remainder would be what would be attributable to the residential class. So that, I'll just go back real quick because I want to show you this really fast. So that shift that you're seeing right there on the left, that's, the factor is the percentage from one that you would be reducing, so as you can see, it's almost, you don't even get to a percent difference. That's because ninety-eight percent, exactly, you would see that go significantly below that number if you had enough commercial, commercial, industrial, personal property value.
Okay, I was trying to figure out where these eleven million and two point four million are. I was in Carlisle because I, it doesn't seem like they're a whole lot.
A few.
A few, I mean, you've got Assure Tech and, you know.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Not a whole lot.
One house is a good one of the two point four.
So granting an open space discount, I am going to keep this very brief, I think the board has been updated on this, I, all of the documents are available online. The key points of this, sixteen communities in Massachusetts, only one provider an open space discount. The better option is to go with the chapter land process that has been encouraged here in Carlisle. There are twenty-seven properties that are currently classified as chapter sixty, sixty-one, sixty-one A or sixty-one B. It allows for rollback to recapture of that tax break at a later date if they convert. So with that said, the Board of Assessors does recommend that know, that an open space not be granted.
Do we do a motion at this point?
Yep.
Move that the board does not grant an open space discount for fiscal year twenty-two five.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, so I have a question here, Brian. So if you, if you fall under the chapter land exemption, you pay the regular tax now, but if you do something later, you can claw it back?
No, so chapter sixty-one is forester land. So sixty-one and sixty-one A are forestry and farmland. Those valuations are provided by the state, they are significantly below what they would be, you need to have at least five contiguous acres.
So you don't assess them?
I don't come up with those values, those values are dictated from and provided to us by the Department of Revenue Division. And chapter sixty-one B is open space, so those are people that like to, they have five acres, they choose not to develop it, leave it undisturbed, basically almost a nature preserve. If those, those people receive a, a discount significantly less than under the previous to chapter sixty-one or sixty-one A. But the key is, is that if they're, if the owners decide to change the use from which they are currently using, there are different procedures in order to recapture the tax savings that they received five years previous from the date of.
So it's a five-year clawback the other way, five?
Yes.
And, and I presume that, that on the sixty-one B, it would have to be a buildable lot, it couldn't just be five acres of marsh or whatever, because we have lots of people.
Well, that's, no, it could be, it can be five acres of wetland. What it is though, the amount of, if it, it's a percentage discount of the total assessed value, it doesn't really make much sense if you have five areas of backland that is inaccessible, no, and no frontage, because from an assessed value standpoint, it only has value to the people that immediately bought it if it is not wet, as many, a lot of the land here in Carlisle is. So there are a few properties that do, that are conforming, that would allow for that, but very few use them.
All right. Well, just the last point, so, so this is a conservative, financially conservative approach, because they're paying the lowest tax they can pay, there's only upside for us, there's no, we're not building a liability, we're only building.
No, this is, this is ensuring that, that the tax rate, the, the taxes that have been saved by the property owner, there is a method by which to claw back those taxes.
Nice, thank you.
All right, so we had a motion, a second, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Barney?
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Triola, aye.
Moving on, so residential exemption, I have made this available to the, to the select board prior to the meeting. The key points to this slide here is the residential exemption is a method by which the governing body of a community can provide a, a tax break in the form of a reduction of the total taxable value to the, to those residential properties that are both domiciled within the community and live there year-round. This is the, this is a method by which the communities that do enact a residential in Mass, a residential exemption in Massachusetts utilize. So it's, it is, they begin with the average assessed residential value, that is the total value of the residential class divided by the total number of residential parcels, that's where that one million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar number comes from. The resident, the exemption range is between zero to thirty-five percent, and that is the percentage of that one point one seven five number that you see there. So you can see the impact as the, the exempt percentage is increased, you can see it's incredibly minimal as you continue to increase that exemption amount. The, the savings to the average single-family home reaches a maximum of three point seven five percent, where lower-value properties such as condominiums, as they're continuing to develop elsewhere, see a significant tax break through this, the implementation of this type of an exemption. So qualifying criteria, you have to, it has to be a residential property, owner occupied as of the first of two thousand and twenty-four. But from what we've, the analysis I've seen, you have eighty-nine point two nine percent of the residential parcels would qualify, which means it's not being selective in targeting just those people that are domiciled, because Carlisle is a bedroom community, people live in, in domiciled here in their homes.
But you're saying it wouldn't.
Pardon?
It's like the commercial, it's like the CIP.
Yes.
Enough diversity to make it work.
Yes, and I, just to get through this, David, you asked a great question. So the typical communities that have residential exemptions can be classified within one or two categories. You have high-density urban, such as the Boston Brookline Game Bridge, or resort communities where basically out on Cape Cod, where you see a high percentage of, of second homes. So, so that allows them, the, the, the select boards of those communities to, to provide those people that are domiciled there year-round with a, with a tax through the reduction. So.
Is the one report? I don't know.
One note I wanted to make here is during this, during my last year's presentation, and I mentioned Concord had implemented the residential exemption, I know that stirred a lot of discussion. One of the things that I would say here is it is the outlier community, I think I've, I've researched it in the paper that I put together, the feasibility study, I think details why Concord went that route in order to implement that resident, that residential exemption. Also, one of the things that, I know a lot of people see the, the similarities between Concord and Carlisle, but after we did a deep dive, both myself and Frank, thank you Frank, having gone through this, he is in attendance, the distribution of resident, of single-family home values is significantly different between the two communities, and that is what is allowed for Concord to have a higher percentage of properties that have seen a tax break or no increase versus those on the, on the higher end that really have subsidized the, the majority of those properties falling below.
They have a more diverse housing stock.
Yes.
They're just like, very expensive.
If you graph the standard distribution for them, it's like this, for us, it's like this.
It is not perfect, not normally distributed, it's much more, the, the right-side tail of the ninety-nine percent tails off significantly as to, Carlisle is far more normally distributed. So for that reason, the, the board, the Board of Assessors had recommended to not adopt a residential exemption of any percentage for fiscal two thousand and twenty-five.
I move the board does not adopt a residential exemption for fiscal year twenty-two five.
Second.
Is there any discussion among the board? All right, seeing none, Barney, you want to start us with a roll call vote?
Yes, sir, Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Triola, aye.
I know we were very brief on that, the residential exemption discussion, I just want to remind people at home, there is a feasibility study that is one of the documents we have online that really goes into depth as to the, the analysis that was done by the department, I would recommend that.
And I will just add one comment, that to implement that kind of plan, the overhead is significant, requires a lot of administrative effort to vet the applications and process them. Concord has definitely talked about that.
Ken, is, is condo a different thing or is it all part of it? Your chart had the, I get the adjustment of the, you know, higher and lower.
All residential property.
You had a different sort of metric on the, your table showed the condos as a different.
Yeah.
I mean, how would you?
Because there's more condos that are rented out.
Oh, why do they see a big, oh, why did I include condo here?
Well, I mean.
Because they see the same percentage that, five percent of the average residential value is a far sing, more significant number of the, the average condominium than it is, it's represents, because condominiums in general are valued less than the average single-family home. That is why they see a significant decrease in.
Oh, because they occupy the way cheaper end of the scale.
Just the median value of condominiums are average, far less than, as you can see.
But it's, it's not, if I, if there was a condo over here that was eight hundred thousand or whatever, and then there's a shack that's also eight hundred thousand, they'd be treated the same. It's not, it's not that they're a condo.
No.
It's that just.
Not that it is condominium-specific.
There's no special rule of that concept, that's all.
I'm just using this for analysis purposes here, so that is the average condominium value, so I was just reflecting on, they would see a much bigger decrease than the largest land use class, which is a single-family.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving forward, last but not least, is small commercial exemption, four properties in Carlisle qualify, they're not, the most important part is a zero to ten percent reduction. The most important part of this is, there's no guarantee, this is seldom utilized in Massachusetts, there's only twelve people that are, twelve different communities that offer this. The big problem is, you can never guarantee that the, the, if you reduce the value of the property by zero to ten percent, that the person receiving that reduced tax bill is going to, if it's not owned and occupied by the same person running the business, you can't guarantee that it's going to go to the, to the person that occupies it. I've seen they're one in the same. So you may be giving a tax break to somebody who may not be passing it through to the tenant running the business on the property. And the, it's, the business is one of the qualifying factors. So with, for that reason alone, because you can't guarantee that, the Board of Assessors has recommended not to grant a small business commercial exemption, small commercial exemption.
Move the board does not adopt a small commercial exemption for fiscal year twenty-two five.
Second.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Triola, aye.
Okay, really quick, this is my last slide, I promise. So what we have here is, I just want to mention, coming out of the Deck House Advisory Committee, and I know Scott, you mentioned about assessment, the, the questions at the beginning of the hearing, I'd like to address that. So one of the big things that came out of that Deck House Advisory Committee was some of the concerns that the, that the community had with the operations of the department, and it wasn't until, I wasn't aware of some of this information until after this went out. I think we worked with the Deck House Advisory Committee from the various members that were elected from public, the three of myself, Frank, as well as a, a rotating member of the board. We came up with four different recommendations that we, we committed to. So, and it was really a transparency situation that they wanted to be made aware of what the board was doing, and I just want to, we have finally committed and about to achieve that fourth goal that came out of that Deck House Advisory Committee that concluded approximately eighteen months ago. So we have the, we've committed valuation transparency, we have committed to releasing values on an annual basis where the Department of Revenue only requires it once every five years. They are allowed to review their value before it's actually committed to the Department of Revenue. If they have an issue, it's almost having a pre, a pre-abatement process. There have been taxpayers that have, that have taken advantage of this, it, it's great for the town and it's, and it's great for the taxpayer, because they don't have to file for an abatement, we can adjust these values beforehand. I think that this has been a great, a great process that we have implemented and committed to advance notification to those people in the community of, of valuation changes that are forthcoming.
And it has no impact on the overlay fund, which makes everybody happy.
Because the value, because adjusted value is not included in the tax rate derivation, that overlay account is not reduced by what would typically would be a formal abatement application after January first. So valuation equity, you wanted to, Scott, you were talking about the recent cyclical reinspection rate. So in twenty-two, when I arrived, we were at forty-seven percent that had been inspected in the last ten years. You can see through the efforts of both myself, Frank, and the third-party that we've hired, we are now over ninety-one percent. So we have, we have, we have already have the scheduled slate of those homes that need to be inspected, be. beginning in the spring, and Bruce is committed to coming back and rejoining us, as well as Frank and myself into getting us close to 100% before July 1st. So one thing I want to point out is the abatement applications, you have that huge spike in fiscal '23. As you can see, last year, only 17 applications. I think that's a reflection of the increase in the quality of the data that we have here, truly. The feasibility study report and presentation of the new mandatory margin, this is a request that came out and thought about doing this. We gave this presentation, I believe in March of this past year. We provided all that data. That is another study that we placed on the website that is still available if anybody's interested in that. The last and not least is the administrative transparency. Great efforts by Frank, my assistant, who's worked incredibly hard in developing this new publication that we anticipate having released by the end of the year. It will go through the local property tax levy, the assessed values, the tax rate, it will go through the changes, the same questions that you had, Scott, how does my value change? Why, you know, the big question was Deck House, why did they see such a big jump where others did not? It will go through all of those different scenarios to present to the public so they have a better understanding. They can go through this guide and understand how valuation adjustments may or may not affect their tax bill more or less than the average within the community. The mass appraisal process, understanding what, what sales we use, and finally, a visual guide of the property record card, they want to understand, how do we understand the information about our property? It will be a section-by-section detailed guide with, with photos and should detail exactly what information and how to interpret their property record card, and we look forward to having that available electronically by the end of the year with a presentation sometime in the first two months of the year. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
I would go.
Well, it's just that on the sheet that I'm wondering if you're going to cover the excess levy capacity, or is that something?
The sheet, the excess levy capacity, yes.
I have a quick question while we're waiting on that.
Go ahead, Barney.
Yeah, Brian, I'm just wondering, on those 90 abatement applications that came in in '23.
Yes.
How many of them were, how many of them were approved?
Great question. I believe there were 60 that were approved.
Yeah, it's about 60, I was gonna say about two-thirds of them, Barney.
You know, that was part of, I, excuse me, and I do apologize, I'm about to jump onto the DLS website, and I will give you that.
And it's interesting, if you look at the ones that were approved, most of it related to condition.
There were a large, there were 60 deck houses that filed, and one of the, one of the issues was, there were a number of those homes that had been inspected since the 90s. They were non-compliant. So that's what, that's one of the reasons, I think, that, that we, that so many abatements were granted because of the lack of current data reflecting the condition quality of some of those homes. I think with the over 600 inspections that we've done between Bruce and myself, we've really, in understanding and being on the same page when we both inspect a home, which is imperative to, once again, providing those equitable assessments, that's why I think you've seen such a drop between fiscal '23 to '24.
And again, I'll come back to what I said earlier, the quality of the inspection and making an effort to inspect the interior, asking to do that is very important. We've had incidences in the past where that wasn't really attempted, and as a result, you get these superficial inspections that don't necessarily tell you what you need to know about things like condition. So hopefully, we've rectified that problem now.
Yeah, thank you.
I am about where I need to be, I do apologize.
Okay.
Just a comment, I mean, looking forward to the release of the guide. I think a lot, this is the type of thing that a lot of people don't think about or care about until they see a sudden spike in their tax bill, and then suddenly they're looking to, looking to understand the process of, of how all this works. And so I think if, if we have a guide that helps with that, that we can promote on the website, that we as select board members can refer people to, that we ourselves can read to make sure we understand it all, is hugely valuable.
Yeah, what we do is really boring until it isn't.
Until it isn't.
Did I understand you to say under number one, that you notify the people if there's going to be a tax, a change in the assessment, or they're responsible to look in September to find out if they haven't?
We announced that it's available electronically on, on our website, both in PDF and Excel format. They are free to download that, that file and do their own analysis, but it will, it is for every property within the community. We also make, we have paper copies available here in-house if anybody would like to review those. I think most people get them electronically.
The amount of data.
It was out on City in the Woods, it went out, and, or there was a discussion about it, and then everyone kind of jumped to it.
They had said that, the way they said it sounded like they were.
It had come out, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Being a mailing, so they've gotten away with that, much like we don't have to, now as Ryan let me know, that we don't have to actually publicate, publicize that this classification hearing will occur in paper now for IGR. I think that it, most people being technologically inclined here in this town, we do put something in the mosquito as a reminder for those that are not, but we put all that information on our website. We think that the town has done an excellent job, not, not just, not just with our information, but across the board in making that information available. And this is just, I think it really speaks to the, the members that live here and their, their ability to retrieve that information.
Great.
With regards to what you've requested, Kate, the excess levy capacity is $3,575,562 and 10 cents.
I love the 10 cents.
All right.
You want to make that motion?
Yes, sir, furthermore, we acknowledge that the Board of Assessors has informed the Select Board that the excess levy capacity for fiscal year 2025 is $3,575,562 and 10 cents.
Second?
Backing.
It's not a motion.
Okay.
And I furthermore, I move to close the fiscal '25, '25 tax classification hearing.
Second?
All right, I'd just like to say thank you to the assessors and to the assessing board, it's an excellent job, and I really think you're on the right track, and it's really bodes well for our town to have you.
Appreciate it. I think Ken was, you know, is, as much time as I have, I put in here, I could not have done it without Ken. That first year, I will tell you, was incredibly challenging, and the town is incredibly lucky to have someone like Ken on the board that has really put more than his fair share of time into assisting me at a time when I didn't have any staff. So I, you know, it, it speaks to the civic engagement and responsibility, and Ken is a prime example of that.
Great, well, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Sure, we'll do a roll call vote.
Arnold I.
Maudell I.
Reed I.
Snell I.
Triola I.
Great, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We've run a little behind our normal timing, but I think that was really important, and I'm glad we went through that.
Yep.
Now we're on to the fire station owners, project manager goals discussion, and do we have?
He's out in the hallway.
Oh, he's out in the hallway? Great.
Come on in. Is there a Neil?
I wasn't going to commit Brian to it during that, but we're going to read every value in the podcast next year. Go through and read for him, if you want to listen.
Right, okay. Hey, guys, welcome, come on in, pull up a chair. We're thrilled you're here.
Glad to be here. While our guests are getting settled, I was asked to give just a quick, brief intro on where we're at with this, with this process. Welcome, gentlemen, good to have you back.
Good to be here, thank you. So first, I'd like to remind the board about the goals of this project, and then go over quickly the history of the project, and then why, why we're having this discussion tonight. So the goals of the project, as written in the RFS and decided by the board prior to submitting it, to hire our OPM, was to expand the capacity to accommodate a on-call volunteer fire department for the next generation, to provide proper health and safety of our firefighters, to accommodate gender equity within the facility, to carefully consider existing space and provide adequate and appropriate truck storage, and to promote and attract candidates for the, for the volunteer workforce. So that, that was the reason for the building expansion. The process, as it started during, during my time here, because it's been a long time, the board has done, has done much with this, but to succinctly summarize what, what has been done during my time here, Julie came in and talked to you about a potential scope for design. We were going to hire a designer, and the board walked with Julie and I through that process. We, we went out, we tried to get a designer to do and meet these goals. A designer selection committee came with a recommendation, but it was, it was pretty clear to the board and during discussions that the people that were applying were, were interested in helping us with building, perhaps a building that, that they felt the town needed, and the Select Board wasn't necessarily comfortable that it was building the type of building that the Select Board was willing to support publicly. So then we talked again about hiring a owners' project manager to help us with designer selection, to help understand what the needs of the, of the building could be in comparison to the fire chief's explanations and recommendations, and Brian is online right now as well for this. And now we're here. So the, we hired CMS, we're very happy to work with CMS and the crew, and they are, they are now your, your employee, your project manager for this, and are to help you with this next phase, this design phase, which is to create a feasible, or a conceptual design to bring to town meeting for design funding, and then eventually, and hopefully, a project funding for the actual construction. So the board is, I sent out some notes today on what you should be discussing, but I think Neil has some intro for you, Neil and crew has some intro for you, and then also, you should be conversing and explaining to them what you want to get out of this project so we can, we can move the project forward.
Great, well, you want to introduce yourselves, and let's go to it.
Certainly, happy to. Neil Joyce, Construction Monitoring Services, I'm the Vice President and Project Director for the project.
And I'm Scott Lupker, I'm the Principal Project Manager.
And I'm Steve Acaro, and I'm the onsite representative.
Great, go to it, and tell us what you think.
So we, I guess sort of to, we will, in the next couple of days, we will draft up a selection RFQ for designer selection. There's really two different ways that we could go about this. We certainly have a recommendation as to which way we think is best for you and most expedient. But essentially, as part of our scope of services, and as we had outlined in our fee proposal, we could hire a subconsultant, an architectural subconsultant that we work with that could sort of vet your program, ask some questions, do some really pretty minimal research into the site and whatnot, sort of make sure the overall plan is sound, and then come up with a conceptual design that we could roll out to the town in May. That could be done at a relatively low cost, we could get started on that right away, we would not have to do a designer selection process until a full design was vetted, and that person would be presumably brought in late spring, early summer, after the project is affirmed to move forward.
Neil, can I stop you before you?
Please.
So that scenario has you effectively, you guys with your consultant doing the scheme?
Doing the conceptual design.
So the schematic that we would present at town meeting would be like your work product, basically?
Yes.
It would be doing, and that would be based on programming?
It would, correct.
Well, our version of program.
Well, our version of programming, right.
So that, that is not necessarily what I think is the best way to go forward, but it is certainly a pathway that we could move forward. The second process would be to affect a designer selection process immediately. We could put an RFQ together, and with Ryan reviewing it, we could certainly restate the goals of the project as they've been presented tonight, certainly add any additional color commentary that would be desirable by the board. We could have that proposal out on the street before the Christmas and New Year holidays, and likely, a designer selection process would take us till about, on or around February 1 to complete and have a designer onboard.
And what would be the, if we took that route, what would be the delivery for town meeting? It would be more in-depth?
So that would, that would roughly give us about 60 to 75 days to put together a concept design. I, in, in speaking with Ryan sort of offline, I was told there may be some flexibility as to what annual town meeting date would be, whether it was May or June, and I think under that pretense, I think a June date would be beneficial.
I don't think we're headed to there.
Okay.
Just as, we haven't set the date.
Yep.
But the dates that we've kind of reserved are in May.
Okay, so again, I think the, the most important thing for any RFQ is that you set a realistic expectation for performance, clearly outline the goals and objectives of the project, and you make sure that you have that design team affirm those goals as part of the selection process, right? So if you want a proposal, and you want people, and you want to vote in May, then we'll take that May date, we'll back off of it, we'll know exactly what you need, when you need it, and we'll, we'll get there. I have no problem making that commitment. A little more time is always nice, but if, if we're held to a deadline, we'll, we'll make the deadline. I think it's important, particularly in, in evaluating the two paths forward, I think that there's an inherent advantage to getting the designer onboard as soon as possible, and most importantly, that they have some skin in the game when you go to the town. I think it's more important that you have the right solution for the town and the right team in place, rather than saying, here's one option, and it might change a little bit when we get a new designer onboard, you know, kind of after the fact, it just seems, seems a little out of order to me, frankly.
Yeah, we've already been through several, we've kind of been there, I think, done that.
Brian outlined it, that the fact that we've had a designer, and it maybe, you know, was not what we necessarily thought would, going to be best for the town, and I think, you know, maybe tonight you can hear from us a little bit about what we're looking for. I mean, you talked about goals and objectives of the project, and I think that's the real crux of this, because, you know, you have to be in sync with what we think, and I'm speaking for myself, but maybe I'd like the board to chime in, I think that is one of our biggest hurdles, is understanding what is the appropriate way to get us forward, because, you know, we've outlined these goals, we want to have an on-call fire department, that's something where, as a town, at least this Select Board is committed to, and thinks that, you know, from an economic standpoint, that makes a lot more sense. We have some issues with, you know, the police, the fire force being, you know, having more gender parity, and so we need bathroom facilities in there, you know, that's something that's obvious. We've gone through these different things, but the question is, you know, what's essential and what's not, because we're faced with, like most towns in Massachusetts and everywhere else, we're faced with huge, you know, kind of looming additional costs for things, and we're, I think as a board, trying our best to, you know, really dive in and say what's essential and what's not, and so we need some expertise to, and this is my opinion, but maybe the board chime in, but expertise of saying, this is what, and I have great respect for our chief, and I think he does a tremendous job, and I think he is thrifty by nature, which is good, I don't think he's, you know, out saying he needs everything, but at the same time, it's hard to know exactly what is essential and what makes the most sense, so we're trying to get some expertise from a designer or from a consultant that will help us with that. So does that have to, kind of, can we get to that?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we want to work from principles, so, in other words, you know, the criteria of what's, what's, as you were saying, essential, you know, what are the criteria that are going to be used, and the, you know, the benchmarks that we need to, to. And the benchmarks that we need to check? So that, because it's easy to pile things in that you may or may not need. But we don't know how to, you know, separate the wheat from the chaff. But we would also like to know, you know, if you were to have separated it, well, on what criteria did you separate it? Because we need to kind of be, come along with you on this so that we can then in turn explain to the, be convinced and explain to the town that we're really doing the best job here and we're making the best decisions.
So Neil?
Yes.
You outlined, you know, choice A is like, you guys basically would, with our help, we sort of grew up around to get the standard. In the choice B, there's this, is the consultant, him or herself, an architect? Or just somebody who specializes?
No, they would be, it would be a registered design professional.
And that would be or not necessarily would be the actual architect for the design? Not necessarily, right?
It would likely be structured so that the town had the ability to terminate the agreement at any point, if you so choose. But you would be doing the design process with the intent that this is the firm that you would like to go through the whole process.
So the, you know, as Travis pointed out, it's all about trade-offs, right? So it's one thing to say, you know, code for three fire trucks is blah de blah. These are the things you can do. It's another thing to challenge us to say, as I think we're going to hear from one of our citizens, why do you need three fire trucks? Like, what do you really need? Is that part of what this person would do? Are they going to take, that's kind of the question.
I think that the definition of the program is largely dependent upon the feedback we get from the department, right?
From the fire.
From the fire department and from this board.
Okay. So I guess I'm, maybe I'm looking for yet another missing piece, which is this is extremely technical. This will be, in my opinion, the most technical building we've ever built.
Yep.
And by that, I mean, you know, it's not an office. It's not even, even a police station is pretty technical. But this is really technical, because it's got all these codes and the hot zone and the middle zone and da, 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 da. I'm still struggling with some neutral third party who has absolutely no real stake in the outcome, who challenges us on, I mean, you listed some broad assumptions on the, Ryan, on what you put up there. But really, what does that mean in terms of programatics? Before you even get to design, what does it mean in terms of programatics? That would be an expert of like, you know, maybe it's you guys. It's like fire stations.
Right. And just to add to that, you know, specific examples would be truck storage. You know, what are essential trucks that we may need to store? What are things that we may not? And that's a discussion, and I don't think it's been, it certainly hasn't been decided. But that's where we need someone who is objective to help us. That's one example, if anyone, other example of, you know.
That's largely it.
Well, objective, but also deeply experienced.
Yes, exactly.
Exactly, experienced to be able to push back. And again, I'm not, there's no disrespect to the fire chief, but it's just understanding and it's working that within our kind of thoughts of our budget going forward. And so what could we do? The same is true, and I've dealt with a number of architects, but, you know, some want to build a beautiful, you know, they all do. And it's, and it can sometimes take a life of its own. And who's going to keep that in check? I mean, there is maybe a need for a new structure that is just a prefab-type structure or something. Is that going to be considered? And right now, one of a budget item that's going to come before the town is we're going to ask the town to spend a million dollars on elevators. And so is it considered that maybe this doesn't need an elevator because we're going to do a single level? And that longer term will save us capital costs and repair costs and so forth? I mean, those are the types of things we need to value engineer. But at the same time, I don't, as an individual, I don't want to be shortsighted and say, well, we didn't build anything. And, you know, it doesn't get us where we want to go because we can't retain firefighters or, you know, on-call staff. So we need some expertise.
Right. And I think, honestly, I think the best way to get that is to get your designer onboard ASAP, honestly. They are going to be the most experienced. They're going to have the insight, the knowledge, the desire, which I hope is what we're vetting out during the selection process to make sure that at the end of the day, they're building the right project for you folks. I know that's what we came in and pitched to you right away. There's no cookie cutter decision here. We want to build you the building that's right for you.
So Neil, this is Barney Arnold. I'm on Zoom. So it sounds like you're saying the designer that you would then help us select through this process, who would have an architectural degree, would also be somebody who has experience building or designing fire stations and would be able to address these technical questions that we're talking about? Is that right?
That's correct. We would make, we would make one of the criteria for evaluation of the design proposals, their prior experience on similar projects of this size, nature, complexity, et cetera.
Mm-hmm. Good.
I'm relatively new to this project. And I'm certainly not an expert on fire stations or municipal construction to begin with. But if I were to have a wish list of what we would have in evaluating these things, it would be, and again, making sure we have agreement on what the vision is. But if we're mapping design and all these potential costs and trade-offs, I'd like to know which aspects of it are critical to maintaining our current protection level as a community? I mean, I mean like the basic, what is core critical? Without this, you will not. What is, what is the next level of something we need in Carlisle to meet that goal? So maybe it's not critical criteria, but it's in Carlisle, we need to do this feature or this function to be able to maintain an on-call department, but it's not mission critical. So it's the next ring out of what we need in a design. The next ring would be a nice-to-have. Maybe that's the antique fire trucks or things like that that we may decide are important for community purposes, for other purposes, but they're not.
Culture of the department, actually.
But they're nice-to-haves, and then we can discuss those trade-offs and decide, well, this is something we think is important, and we're willing to invest this extra, you know, $30,000 to be able to do this. Or it's $2 million and it's just, we can't do it because we need to accomplish those first two core. So I don't know what the right striations are, but I think the concern is that everything is mission critical, everything is needed. But being able to break it down into the core requirements to meet the basic level of our current protection level, which I don't know a ton about, but I understand it's 8B. What's needed to do that? Then what's needed, we believe, for Carlisle? And so we can make those trade-offs and evaluate some of these.
Scott, you've just done an outstanding job of describing the program process. You really have.
Well, you can hire me, no.
You have, you've hit the nail on the head on many fronts. That is what the program process is, is going through a process and asking the critical questions. Need versus want, must-have versus like-to-have. And at the end of the day, at the end of that programming effort, it gives you a target square footage to build to. And then you look at how those plans sort of come together with the existing station and how it would work with an addition if it was here, or how it would work with an addition if it was here, right? And sort of lay out the new station in very high, a very low level of detail, very highly conceptual detail. And then look at the existing spaces and how those can be repurposed to meet the goal without building new space, right? That is, that is that iterative process of programming that will be built through very early on.
So that sounds like longer than a 70-day process.
I make Carlisle tests anyway.
It can be, right? You can get stuck in an eternal loop and do nothing at the end of the day. Yes, it can take, it can take a while. But I think, like, our goal is to sort of help to separate it, to your example, the wheat from the chaff, early on. What do we need? What do we want?
And I think we're in agreement now. You've laid out, you know, you've laid out a good process. We seem to be aligned with it. But I'm back to timeline, right? So it's coming up on holiday period. If we were to tell you tonight, yes, you want to go that direction, you're going to go vet some firms, right? And then how long, remind me, and how long?
The design process, the designer selection process typically is 45 to 60 days. You can expect.
Yeah, so in this, this time of year, 60, right?
We'll get the RFP or RFQ out on the street prior to the holidays, either the week of the 4th or the week of the 11th, most likely. Two weeks and a day minimum. RFQs come back first week in January after the holidays. And then you vet them.
We're vetting, not you, we're vetting.
Right. We select, rank, top three finalists.
Same old thing.
Very much like you did with us, frankly. And then you do interviews and make your selection.
Okay, so take that one, you're ready to go, I guess, right?
Yes.
February, March?
It gets tight.
I mean, if it is, if it, this is a big project, right?
Yeah, no, that's why I'm wondering, you know, is it a fall town meeting?
Maybe, I don't know. I mean, you can always shoot for that.
I just don't know.
But do we, taking another step back, as a select board, as a town, as working with the chief, are we in agreement about what the target is? What, we saw those goals. What does that translate into? Is it just basically maintaining the existing level of service for the fire department? I mean, what I mean by that is, what is the, is that what we're saying? Like, we're not trying to enhance service in some way? We're just trying to maintain the current level of protection in on-call, in an on-call nature, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it?
Well, you, do we have, I mean, you alluded to Mr. Lowery's coming with an 8B or whatever this, is that the highest category of?
No, we can go higher, but we could put in water.
No, no, I mean, can one, a small town with our type of water? Are we at the highest we can be with the type of town we are? Or is there room to get a better qualification?
This is something our.
Do you know that?
I don't.
Fire chief is on call as well.
Okay.
Why don't you ask?
All right.
Well, I mean, that's pertinent to his question.
Sure.
If we're already at the best we can, like, our bond rating, you know, is high. It's not the highest, but it's the highest we can get because we're a little town. So yeah, we could save more, okay, we could do that.
In our home insurance, our home insurance is, you know, as I pointed out, is, it feeds into things. So are, you know, are we at the most practical, reasonable, best place?
Right, right, exactly, right. And that's something we.
Maybe we'll ask, Chief Soros, you're on the line. Do you want to chime in on that comment?
So there are two directions you can go with this. One is the direction of the insurance world, and that is that I am regularly asked, what is the water source within 1,000 feet? And so if you were an 8B without some additional capabilities, there may be a lot of insurance companies are not willing to insure in Carlisle. And that's going forward. That's just the way the insurance industry has changed. In terms of towns our size with our kinds of water system, getting to a six is not a huge lift. Getting to a four is harder. There are towns without water systems that are in the range of three. So it's definitely possible to get there. We just have to, and without putting a water system in. So it's there. It's not the thing to promise, and I don't think necessarily that's. I think what we have to look at is how can we maintain a system that requires a fair number of people? You know, for us, three guys and a truck is not really a fire department that can do what we have been doing. And in order to maintain a call department, what? We're swimming upstream trying to do this, right? Nobody in our area is able to. We are, but we're going to need some help. We kind of have multiple hands tied behind our back. And one of them is a station that doesn't foster and is, cannot support people being in it other than when there's a call. So there's a lot of answers to that. The answer to what you asked is, can towns without water systems get lower than 8B? Absolutely, they can.
Lower than 8B.
And if we did that, if that was where we got, it could be that the savings and insurance rates, you know, would be awash with, or might even be better than. But that's not the kind of discussion we probably need to have in terms of deciding what we're doing.
So we're currently at 8B?
Correct.
Okay.
And Chief, this is Barney also on Zoom. Are you, are you advocating for trying to lower that? Are you saying at the 8B level, which is where we've been for some time, if I'm remembering correctly, that that is, you think we're fine? I mean, obviously, I understand the homeowner's insurance question, but that since we've, since people that have homes in Carlisle have been paying those insurance rates for some, you know, for however long you've lived here, are you, are you in favor of trying to lower it? Are you comfortable keeping it at 8B?
I think when we have the capabilities and we have multiple people on the department who are experts in compliance, we probably should, just because we should. But that's not the goal of the building.
Should try to lower it, you mean?
Absolutely. I mean, you might as well. When we have the capability to do that, we may as well. But that's not, we won't be investing money into things in order to do that. It's just, in order to be successful at what we do, we have to have certain capabilities. If, you know, we're a department that's going to, that can't put fires out or handle, you know, brush fires and the kinds of problems we have in this town, we won't be able to attract people, right? So we have to be competent and capable in order to attract the people to keep it a call department. So that's where I'm focused. But if we're competent and capable and it can be reflected in lowering ISO rating, yeah, we should go ahead and do that.
So the question for us is, how do we get the information that we need to answer the question about ISO ratings? What it would take to get a lower one? What it would possibly save the town in insurance rates versus cost the town in additional costs?
Exactly.
So that, because I don't have that expertise.
You have to hear insurance. I mean, I just want to back up a little bit. I'll give you my impression of what I heard from Brian. So I'd like us to be clear on this. I think Brian is saying, of course, a better, a lower rating's better, right? Of course it is. But it's not the be-all and end-all. We are a full-service fire department. We take cats out of trees. We have EMTs, we do this, we do that. We, the first thing, I mean, we need that piece of data to frame our own prioritization, I think. And so that's what I heard, is that really, we don't, we don't know where a lower rating sits in the priorities compared with these other activities.
Exactly.
So to answer that, I think we have to get an insurance specialist. They would be able to say, correct me if I'm wrong, these lower, in this kind of town, you know, going down to a six or whatever is typically X percent on your homeowner's bill. We could do the math of, you know, 3,000 houses and save, collectively saves, you know, whatever, and decide if that's something we really want to pursue. And maybe it's not, maybe it's.
Well, David, it sounded like a lot of what, and we've got the chief on, so we should ask him, but a lot of what he was saying was compliance, which may be, you know, paperwork relative to, you know, different aspects of the compliance.
Well, that's part B.
But it could, but it really, the bigger picture is how do we keep an on-call fire?
Exactly, exactly.
And so he's had, the chief is advocating for a facility that has the structure and the ability to attract.
Right, that's exactly what it said, but to Kate's point. So he's got that position. Kate, I think, if we're generally saying, how do we know? How do we know that the rating isn't more important from a collective economic? I mean, we are torn always in this town between, you know, our tradition, our antique fire truck and the pumper truck, that'll work, you know? But to be purely an economic actor, we should look at the total savings potentially to the homeowners and insurance and what it takes to get there. We should just kind of, that's what you're asking, right, Kate?
What, do you do that?
That's an insurance.
That's an additional charge, another cost to us.
No, insurance. The real question for the building, though, is not, is not the department's service function. It's, do you need more space or certain space in the building in order to meet that lower criteria? I think that's insoluble. I think you can get that answer.
It's a two-part thing. It's the same like Travis said, paperwork. What do the ratings buy you in a percent discount? That's like a thing that I bet an insurance, a good insurance agent will be able to help us with. And by the way, we have a very good one in town, I'm not going to plug him in a public meeting. He lives in town and he's very good. Secondly, secondly, then you say, okay, if that's a thing, what are the steps to get to the lower rating? Is it a bigger bay? Is it better paperwork? You know, what is it, right? I mean, maybe it's an admin, maybe it's a part-time admin who does all that stuff, I don't know. But, I mean, that's the kind of, but all that is not, that's not a spring town meeting.
No, it's clearly not.
That's now a fall town meeting. That's like taking your time and really stepping through these things.
I mean, what I, what I'd like to be able to, you know, back to standing up in front of the residents and justifying what we, we know is going to be an expensive building project, no matter what, is here's the, here's the design, rough design that we want you to fund. These are the things, these are the aspects of it that we absolutely have to do, no questions asked, just to maintain for the base level. And then here are the things that are included because we need to maintain an on-call fire department. And, and these things will enable us to do that because of this or because of that. And so that, at least for the residents, they know that everything has been properly considered and is properly thought about in terms of how it's going to ultimately allow us to achieve that goal. And it's not, you know, it's, it's not, oh, because we just, we thought that would be cool, or, you know, that's all I want to be able to do. And, and so you need to understand what the base criteria are, and then we need to understand how each aspect of the, of the new building will support the challenges we have of maintaining on-call. And, and I think that's perfectly fine. We just need to make sure as we go through the design process that we're, we're looking at it through that lens.
But you didn't mention ISO, the, the rating in your analysis.
Well, I, that's what I say, the core requirement to maintain our current protection level, right?
Okay.
And so it may, there may not be much in the new building that is needed to maintain the current protection level, right? But there may be some aspects of the building, say, square footage. We want a bigger, why? Because we need to, we want to maintain an on-call. And to do that, we need this amount of square feet. I, I can't take it all the way down the line because I'm not a station designer, but every, every aspect of it needs to tie to achieving that goal, in my mind. Does that make any sense, or am I just?
No, no, I agree, but I'm just wondering on the, David's point about the, you know, ISO component, if there's an economic component that reduces the, you know, cost to town residents because we're doing some of this, we should be able to, is that what you were saying, David? We should be able to articulate that.
A pure economist would say collectively, whether you pay your home insurance premium or your tax bill, it's money. And if you just put everything in the pot, they might say, great, I want a fifteen million dollar station because you've shown me that collectively, we're going to save thirty million dollars across the town. I don't know, but I mean, if that's a thing, and I don't even know if it's a thing.
It's hard.
It takes some time to nut that out.
Yeah, I think we need to look at that. I don't know, I have no idea what that looks like in terms of what would be required. I think, and the chief can chime in, I know water source is a big, big part for the home insurance, right? Like, and we're not going to be putting in a central water.
That's why I say, it's like the bond rating, there's a cap to what we can get.
Yeah, but that's separate from the, even from the building project.
It is.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, well, but, yeah, okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, more sys, maybe you need less pipe hose, so you don't need that hose store.
No, that's not, yeah, we can't, impossible.
One of the thoughts I have is that there, there are residents who have expressed interest in this. Maybe we hear a few, from a few residents and see what they have to say. I don't know if John Lavery is still on, I don't see him posted on here, but I suspect he's on.
He's a black square.
Black square. Death.
All right, so.
I'm still here.
If you want to, I, I give you, you know, two minutes, but, you know, what would you, what do you think of this? And tell us your thoughts on how to approach this, or whatever else you want to.
Okay. I think first of all, good job so far from the select board with the questions you asked tonight and the thoughts you expressed, because they're, they're moving towards the concerns that I expressed in my note. I think I agree with Chief Soros on one point. And that is the way, the way I heard him. He said, if we do what we need to do to the fire station, and I'm going to assume that includes to maintain the current public protection level and do all the other things we need to do to maintain the call fire department and the full services that we currently deliver. If it so happens that through the training and expertise, et cetera, we develop in, in billing that, that we have an avenue to improve our protection class, then we should do it. Because at that point, it's kind of a freebie. But when you look at it the other way, what he didn't say was, we should build towards trying to improve our PPC rating because the cost is uncertain. Where I, where I disagree with him, and it's, and again, in my note, this was part of where I said, this is where we need to focus some of our analysis, the cost benefit part. He asserted that you could get to six or four or even three without a public water source. I hadn't seen that. So that would be something that we could, we should probably task someone to find out if that's true in broad terms rather than some specific example, and how much it would cost to do that. And that in turn may answer Mr. Modell's question, which would say, if we spend X amount of money to improve our class to Y, then we get Z amount of benefit, and that math might prove out to be positive. That might be a good thing, people might want that, even if the initial cost is eye-poppingly high. So my takeaway overall, though, is what, we're too early for the design ver. I disagree with the gentleman in front of you that, that posited that all this is going to come out during the programming phase. I don't think so. I think that we need a little bit longer term of more focused study to see, as Scott said, if we posit that we're just going to maintain our current PPC rating or ISO rating, however you want to put it, of eight B, how much does it cost to do the other things that Brian wants or that we want to maintain the call fire department that we, that we want to have? And, and really focus on that and really focus on, on bare-bonesing that, you know, kind of what's, what's our baseline? What's our minimum? You know, really, where, where's our starting point? What's the problem we're trying to solve?
Okay.
And then go from there. And I just think it's going to take more work than jumping into hiring a designer and, and running towards Maytown meeting. I just don't think that's going to happen in a manner that is going to satisfy the public.
Okay, thank you, John.
That's all I got.
I saw, yeah, thank you, I saw Eric Pales, you'd wanted to speak, if you want to make a brief questions or go ahead.
Thank you, Travis, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Good, so the comment really is that as the select board and the fire chief oversee the preliminary design, you know, I realize that the primary intent is to meet the, the core mission requirements, as you've discussed them so far, and I guess some of those are still under consideration. But I hope and I envision that the, at the appropriate time and at the appropriate level, that we have, we incorporate Carlisle's decarbonization commitment and take environmental sustainability generally into consideration. And an important piece of information that I have not had the opportunity yet to relay to the select board and to others, is that the state has finally announced the first round of climate leader funding at the sixty million dollar level. And that goes again to projects that reduce the amount of our carbon footprint. The ESC, of course, looks forward to working with Sarah Wasserman and others appropriately to help in that overall process. And it is, my, my opinion, like probably others, the preliminary design is a very important first step. It's hard to then work things back into it, so that's why I wanted to be able to make that comment now. Thank you.
Great, great, thank you. Is there anyone else? Christine, I see you just have a thumbs up, but if you, it's something to add, okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this as a resident? Chief Soros, do you have anything else to add to our discussion at the moment?
Sorry, I'm, oh, I'm not on mute. No, I, you know, there, we do have some examples that we can share. We have some analysis that we can share at some point about insurance rates. But again, I, my, my big goal is that we have a strong call department. And I think the only way to do that is to have a successful call department, so that's my goal. And if we can get lower insurance rates out of that, I think that's a wonderful thing, and we'll try to do that. But I, I don't think that's the real goal. I think the goal is that we have a strong on-call department and we try to maintain that.
Okay, thank you. So I think we're talking process now of how best to move this forward, and do we have to?
I'm curious, based on this discussion, does, the, the recommendation to find a designer, is your sense that the designer would either work with us or help us to resolve some of these things? Or do we need to resolve these things before we bring on the?
Good question.
I think your, I think your aspirations are certainly admirable, and I understand them. But, but I think, I think you're going down the road of paralysis by analysis to some degree.
Okay.
And I mean that with all due respect. The, the concept of building a fire station to better suit the needs of your community, if you haven't defined what the needs of your community yet, then you're, you're going out of order. And that's not going to get you where you want to go. So I, I think you, you kind of, you're at a little bit of a crossroads now. I think the need for the station, as it's been conveyed to us, is real. I believe it's supported by the community. What happens community-wide in order to improve insurance rates or whatever else is, to some degree, related, but to some degree, completely unrelated as to what the needs of the station are in order to serve the community, to some degree. So I would just sort of caution you on that.
Well, can I, I'd like to push back a little on that, Neil. So I think, these guys know me, I'm a data-driven guy, right? I like my, as much data as I can get before I make a decision. I don't think I'm analysis by paralysis. I just want the relevant data, I like to move to a decision. So that's my bias. So thanks to John Labrie's opening our eyes to something which, you know, we've been aware of. I don't think it's that complex a task. And I was just looking online, there's services that do it, to get some insurers' view. We can do that in parallel with your sixty days of selecting a designer, to get more knowledgeable about where, where does that put us and what kind of things communities do to improve their rating. And that's something we can go get ourselves, that we can have ready when your designer shows up. We can ask him in the interviews, you know, I mean, because to me, that's a core programmatic element. It could be, we may decide, we may decide it's not worth it, or it's.
Or it's not related.
It's not related, or who knows what, fine, then we know that. But I don't think it's a big lift, and I think we can do it. I don't, I, I think data's important. I wouldn't dismiss that thing in this community, right? And then, but on the broader picture, I agree with you.
I was going to say that I, I support you a hundred percent. If there's something else that we can put into that station that saves your residents money down the road on insurance or whatever else, we would be crazy to do it. Because it, crazy not to do it, excuse me, because it, it will be.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I think our goals, as expressed in our original letter about parity of facilities for.
Safety.
Safety, whatever else we had in there.
Containing.
I have not changed my opinion about those, I'm still in support of those. I don't think there's any other one except for getting maybe this information, just to come.
Well, I like, I like what Neil, as these guys laid out, like, let's get a designer, let's get a designer, let's find somebody we can work with. Pushback.
So given what you've heard tonight, you know, I think. Given what you heard tonight, you're probably regretting taking this contract. You sure you wanted this, Simon? But I, I do think there is significant pushback, not pushback, but our community is a thrifty community. We don't want to spend money where we don't have to, and we're not looking.
And we have a lot of projects, as you know, we have a lot of projects in process and we need to do, so every, we, and we can't.
Wonder what they're going to do now.
Right, we can't. And, and, you know, we do have the benefit of.
They don't, they know that I am not afraid to go public with all my concerns.
John, could you mute yourself? John Lavery, can you please mute yourself? And, you know, we're, we're trying to do this in a efficient manner. So taking that into account, if we do go this way, I'd ask you to hone in on those types of architects and designers who have that approach rather than, you know, are coming out of a significant urban area and saying, hey, we need to do this brick fire, you know, or whatever, I mean, maybe it is.
It'll go well with the antique place.
It'll go well with the. Right, right. I think we're, we're more of the, we just want what's going to.
Just the facts, ma'am.
Yeah.
Sergeant Friday.
Obviously, the on-call piece, and I don't know if certain designers have more experience with on-call, like, that's a huge, that's clearly the central thing of how we can, at minimum, do what we're doing now, but continue to recruit and retain.
And again, as part of the RFQ, we can identify that as a criteria.
Yeah.
Tell us how many on-call departments you've worked with, provide us references with them so we can call them and, and ask them what their experience was like. Real practical examples that are good matches to your department.
I suspect a lot of the gray area or things that, if we need this to do X are going to be in that realm of, this is an important feature because it'll help us attract. And that's kind of a qualitative thing in a lot of cases, but if we have a, a firm that's worked on that, that's seen it, that can help inform. And think of things that maybe we haven't thought of, that have proven successful in design of a building to recruit and retain and keep, keep the volunteers happy, that's important.
And the other aspect is what Eric brought up on the call, is that we are not only a green community, we're a climate leader community, so we do, we have one of the first in the states. We have access to grant money to do these things to, as part of a design element. And we have a person on staff, Sarah Wasserman, who's done a fantastic job with other buildings in town and getting grants. And, and can, and so I think including that in a process or even asking about that as far as the design is important, just because it has the potential to save us money.
Sure.
Yeah.
I have a couple of comments if I could, Travis.
Sure, Barney.
Great, thanks. I just want to second the, what Travis was just talking about in terms of looking at this building design from a sustainable point of view, both inside and outside. And also as part of that, and maybe we have our ESC or our staff help with this, but to be able to, when we do have a preliminary design, to be able to say, you know, these energy efficiency aspects, while they may cost X now and it's slightly more than the, you know, the conventional, what it does over time in terms of how those costs balance out, that's one thing. The other is, at what point do we sort of look at questions or have, at what point do you, Neil, or your team, or the, the architect, the designer that you hire, look at things like how much space is needed, some of the more specific things? How much space is needed for being able to provide the, you know, option of people sleeping at the fire station, working not as firefighters, but working on their own, you know, professional roles so that, you know, they have a place to work and are there when they're on-call? As well as the issue about, you know, socializing and a space for the, the men's and women's bathrooms, et cetera. And that's, and another point for me is to look at the question about training and looking at, and also a space to be able to workout. Those have been raised, and I, I don't know if, again, in this process, the architectural firm that gets hired can look at some of those issues. can look at some of those issues as well as sharing with our existing police department and therefore being able to really think of it in a really, you know, creative, practical, functional way of how much space we do actually need for some of those additional elements that will make it more attractive for people to be part of our on-call service. When, when does, when do those, you know, that level of conversation, when does that take place?
So from a, from a practical standpoint, the, the programming process that we have talked about previously is what drives setting the square footage that is allocated for each of the functions that you've described, as well as others that you have not described as part of the... And pinning that square footage during your program is the largest, is the single largest cost driver in determining the ultimate project cost, is the size of the facility. So all of those discussions will happen very early on, and they'll be vetted, and we'll make recommendations. And if, if those recommendations would not be supported, they'll be taken off of the table and the size of the project will be reduced. Conversely, if there are functions out there that need to be addressed and are not addressed in the program, then that would increase the size of the project. So we'll, we'll do our best to nail it down, and it, it's a process that's very largely driven by the feedback and the answers that we receive to the questions that'll be asked during the program.
And that's between now and whatever the meeting date is going to be, whether it's in the spring or the fall. That would happen between now and then, when we're asking the town to support additional funding. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. And the people you're going to be coming back to with questions or suggestions are going to be a... Are we, are we thinking there's going to be a, what do you call, a building committee that's going to... Or is it going to be the select board that plays that role? I know, Ryan, you've talked about that a little bit, and we, I think we, as a select board, have talked about the need for us to be involved, but I'm, I'm just interested in sort of what's the current thinking on that.
That's, I think, up to the board.
It's a board question. So the designer selection process is, is, it follows your own policy, your designer selection policy. So you have to put together a designer selection committee. As you remember during the OPM process, that was you. That is both good, because you're heavily involved in the process, and bad, because you're slower than most DSCs, because you have other things to do. So you have to decide with the selection of this designer, are you going to, again, serve as your designer selection committee, or are you going to delegate this to, to someone? And I would think very carefully, if you do delegate, who you delegate it to, because you have to have confidence in their decision.
Yeah, okay.
I would be inclined to keep it.
Yep, me too.
As much as I know, we're trying to shed these things, I, I just think that's how, this is how we're going to keep the...
You know, we delegated this whole thing the last time, and it, it boomeranged us and...
Yeah, I mean, I think they're what they need. I think they can do that. We would certainly be the vetting board of the designer. And we can figure that out.
I would be more inclined to have you vet down to three, you know, or something like that, rather than, don't give us 10 or whatever, and say, oh, well, these are all... You're the experts. Like, you've got, and I think tonight, hopefully, you got a sense of our board, our town, where we're coming from, what we were trying to do. Help us find the right consultant, or the right designer. Yeah.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would challenge you on, Travis, is I think you folks have the right to see every proposal that comes in, whether you vet it thoroughly or whether you review it. I would not, I, I've never represented a board where we have not been fully transparent on everything that's come in. So I, whereas I'm flattered that you would like us to, to shortlist it and vet it, and we can certainly provide a recommendation to the board and give you all the reasons why we think this is the right way to go, I think it would be shortchanging yourselves to... Whether you look at them or not is your decision, but I think it's important for us that you have the opportunity to review everything that comes in.
Let me ask Ryan to clarify on procurement rules. We went through this very formalistic process to choose you guys. There's all kinds of rules about that. Now that we've chosen you, any sub-tier thing, I understand your perspective, but is there any rules that say we have, we have to do... Like, when you come to plumbing fixtures, we're not going to vet, like, three different plumbing companies, right?
No, but the, the selection of the designer is described by mass general law. So the, it actually, I have the authority to create the design selection committee. However, in this particular procurement, I would be very interested in what, in what you believe would be a good designer selection committee. So if you remember during the OPM process, you selected yourselves.
Well, I, but that's even a different question. I'm just saying, let's say we are the design selection committee for the designer. We have to follow those same, we can't, I, I, can these guys even say we recommend Mr. X over Mr. Y? Or does that violate some arcane mess?
They, they can, but it would be in a public meeting.
Oh, but they can. Okay. So do that.
I, I'd like to have an advisory like me. And I like your, send us all of them that you go out to.
How many does all, I just got a curiosity, is it?
We've, we've done projects where we've gotten three. We've done projects where we've gotten 12.
You should, you should make mandatory listening to this meeting before they bid. It will be a three.
Then we'll be a one, maybe.
So you're picturing the process, we'll bring an RFQ or an RFS to you.
Yeah.
You will look at it to make sure it meets the criteria. You can get all of the proposals, but that, that narrowing to a final three and/or interviews has to be done in a public meeting.
Right.
So you can't just rate them and send them back to us.
So in your, in your letter, there's 72,000 for some stuff, and then there's like a 25,000. Is that what this is, incrementally expected to be?
The 25,000 was if we were to hire a design consultant as a, as a sub-consultant to us.
Right.
And sort of pre-do the programming process. That, that charge would not apply if we go direct to them.
That's not what you're recommending.
No. We're saying we go direct to the designer selection process.
I see, okay, I got you.
And, and then the fee would be...
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're going to make a, a motion to...
What are we, moving?
To option...
We like option B. Move that we go to option B. Do we need to move this?
You don't need to vote on it.
I don't know.
No, I think we're kind of moving that direction.
That we, oh, right.
And I'm wondering, the, the other piece, the analysis around, the concurrent analysis around protection rating and stuff.
And we can do that. I mean, John already explained that.
Well, and the one thing that we can contemplate on the 10th is related to the available remaining ARPA funds. If we do need to allocate some money to a study or if there's some service that can do that, let's look at, if we can look at that fairly...
Insurance side, I think it's free.
If it is, that's great. A few things in mind.
One other question that occurred to me is, is the, when you do this RFP, you obviously, you must give a range or something of the dollar cost of what this project may anticipate being.
So, so we can do a, I think the way that the guidelines are written is you either have to identify and not to exceed them out, or you simply state that it will be a negotiated fee with the top-ranked finalist.
So that's the fee, though, not the project cost. So we can put, we anticipate this would be a $10 million project, and your fee for that will be a fixed fee or a negotiated fee. But we can't, we can just let them know that it's 10 million. And then during the interview process, like you did with the OPM, you say, are you interested in...
But presumably, I mean, do these, I would think these guys would take on this part of the task as somewhat of a loss leader to get the actual, are these guys doing the actual CDs and everything?
Again.
I mean, presume...
Presumably, yes.
Let me rephrase it. I feel like I'm talking to my attorney. An architectural firm...
I'll take that as a compliment.
You should, because I'm married to one. I have discussions of that. Anyway. A, an architect or an architectural firm...
Yes.
That we engage...
Yes.
Through the process will go all the way through CDs and everything.
Yes.
So that's the more expensive stuff, right? So...
Yes.
Presumably, these firms would be inclined to come in light on the front end in order to win that business? Or is that not...
I think what you will find is that they will negotiate a fee for a scope of services. And they will be less concerned about profit and loss on the front end than they will be when you come in on the backside.
Yep.
But I also will suggest to you that if you try to bring them in at an exorbitantly low fee...
You pay for it in one.
You're going to roll the dice.
I get it.
Right? Because they're not going to, they're not going to do all the legwork up front that they would do under a normal fee structure. So...
Good advice.
You get what you pay for.
Yep.
But that's why we're hiring you, is to help us pick the right, not necessarily the right firm. We can evaluate that, but...
I hope it's the right firm.
Yeah, right. Well, we'll evaluate it, but...
But did you get an answer to your previous question? Did we specify, like, do you, do you definitely put that in? Or do you pick a number out of the air? Or do you not put that in? Do you need to put that in?
The last time we didn't put it in.
You would do it.
You would, I'm sorry.
I would put what you want the cost to be.
Yeah.
And as I, as I've said a couple of times to the entire board, what you're hoping is between the OPM, your staff, and the designer, if they know that you want to spend 10 million, and they come to you and say, it is 12, what you're trying to accomplish that, you trust that it is 12.
Right.
And not say, it's the type of firm that's like, hey, I just can't, I can't sugarcoat this. What you need is 12. This is whether or not you have faith in that team.
That's what we're looking for.
That's one answer, but the other answer is, what do you get for 10? What don't you get for, when you go to 10?
Right.
That's also important.
That's important.
So based on this flat, if we go to fix fee, I mean, you identified in your note, like, okay, $10 million, we get 4.5 percent, it's going to be about 4, 5 million. So is there that metric, like, for this piece? Like, 1 percent of the fee?
You can expect that a design fee typically will run you about 10 percent of the estimated construction cost.
The total. But this piece of it would be what percent?
Normally, for schematic design, it's probably 20 to 25 percent of the overall fee.
All right. So what you're saying is 10 percent of 10 million is a million. So the architect, the architectural services will be about a mil, and this will be 200,000?
Probably 200, 250,000 in that range. And again, I think that that's somewhat negotiable, right?
So to even get that money, ARPA doesn't have that much money, right? So what, where are we going to get that money? Because we have to do that in advance of town meeting. I should turn this, where are we going to get that money?
I think knowing that figure would solve that, answer that question. So if it is 4 million, then we got to go to town meeting.
Anyway. So now you go to town meeting just to get the designer on board and say, we'll see you next year.
Or in the fall.
Okay.
Or the fall.
Okay, all right.
What do we do with the 150,000 in ARPA funds?
There's Brian in the hole in your pocket. Can we prepay you guys?
Yes. So we're dedicating it to the police and the fire OPM contracts to make sure that the ARPA money is obligated. It's not enough to cover it either, but it's enough to get us to town meeting.
I'm good.
It's exhausting.
We need to obligate that tonight.
All right.
No, but the 30...
The ARPA?
No, as long as we do it on the town.
Okay.
For some emergency Christmas cheer.
Anything else, anything else from the board? We've had a long discussion.
I appreciate you guys coming. Where do you guys live?
We're happy to. We're close.
That's good.
That's right.
We're in town, we're close.
I appreciate it. Face to face.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
It is.
We look forward to working with you. We're not, we're...
Do you need anything else from us right now?
No, I think we're good. Thanks for asking. This is...
A lot of hand-holding, I'm...
We are actually, I think, after we get through all the 4 million questions.
We'll get there, despite us all.
And you're working, yeah. I know you're working on other projects with the town.
Yeah.
It will be easy to find, that's for sure.
All right, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Yes, happy turkey day, yeah.
All right.
All right, moving right along. A little bit later than we anticipated, but that's okay.
We got a lot of this other stuff done, so...
We did.
The end, the end was the payoff.
We'll catch up at the end.
This is not a 24 SDM.
All right. So we're going to move on to the town administrator bylaw discussion.
Oh. We're only 15 minutes late on that.
I know.
That's not bad.
So I am the one who put this on here and wanted to move this discussion forward. As we've done, we've, as we've done in the past, we've talked about this. I sent you a memo with this ahead of time, because I've been thinking a lot about it. And I think that the, let me just pull up the... Are you, are you okay, David?
I'll give you a few minutes, yeah.
All right. I was just trying to find the memo here. I think my, my real question with this, I would like to get this so that we can socialize it with other boards and committees within town and really move this to get it in a shape to take it to town meeting.
Yep.
To, to get that, to that point, I think we have to, as a board, finalize it. We've had a couple of drafts. The most recent was included in here. And when I was looking through it, I think, stepping back, what we're trying to do is really focus on the authority of the town administrator. And, you know, we've talked about the responsibilities, and, and our town administrator had said when he came on board, it wasn't expressly clear what those responsibilities were. And so he, he worked as, as best as he could to establish how he would move forward with those. In our current draft of this, I think that there are enumerated a number of responsibilities that I personally think would be better in a, just policies of the select board. Because what we're really trying to do is to have the authority be given to the town administrator, but then the select board retains its, obviously, authority over the town administrator, but then can set policies that talk about how procedures will take place. So to that end, I had suggested that my, my opinion would be to delete Section 3.3.4 through Section 3.3.12 in the, in the, in the current draft bylaws as it stands. But it's really a discussion of what we want as a board and how we want to move this forward. So I don't know if there are questions or comments or... Pete, I see...
Okay. Well, you said to 3.3.12, why not 13? Because that's not a, that's not a authority either.
I just thought that was a catch-all. But you're right, we could take that out.
Unless you said, change 3.3.13 to say the town administrator shall also perform such other duties as set forth in the select board policy.
I think, I think that would be a really good, that would seem like that would fit.
But I'm, I just want to say I am agreement with you that this would be far better document if it were just, just talked about authority rather than responsibilities. And, and I guess the question, then, that leaves the last question is whether to do the 3.2 or the 3.3.2 or the other 3.3.2.
That's, that's the key thing, right. Definitely.
But, but otherwise, I'm in total agreement with you.
And what are your thoughts on that? Of the three, the two sections?
I think I like the second one.
Me too.
Me too.
Because it talks about how the other boards, the other boards...
Everything else is just a policy at the end of the day. Like, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Sorry.
And we, you know, we've had this discussion at, at the select board meetings. I don't remember exactly when that was, but it was, anyway, we, I, I thought the conclusion that all five of us reached was that we wanted to do everything in one bylaw change, including the part of it that requires a special act. And so that would be the, the second of those two options. Correct?
I agree.
Yes.
I'm in agreement with that. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, because we're going to present a unified front on this.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. And then I think, you know, if we do do that 13 as a, or which will now be 3.5, right? Or 4? Yes.
Where are you cutting, where, okay, where are you cutting off? Which 3 do you end with? 3. what?
3.3.4 is the end.
You keep, forget the 3.3.2 thing. 3.3.3 and 3.3.4 you keep.
And then, no, actually, there'll be a new 3.3.4, which will be the old 3.3.13 redrafted to point to the policies.
Yeah, don't, let's not get to draft, what gets chopped here? Does 3.3.4...
On.
All the way down to 3.3.4?
No, from, yes.
Don't, no renumbering, just the numbers as they go.
Yes, 3.3.4 on gets chopped.
So the, shall recommend town policies that's... So the, shall recommend town policies that's prescriptive, you think that itself is a, okay.
Because we may not want him to do that later, and then we can change that as a policy. However, I do think we should have a new 3.3.4, once we've chopped everything else out, which would be sort of like 13, but it would just point to saying, everything else he does, look, if there's anything else he does, look at our policy.
Right.
Yeah, cuz we wanna make sure that also that the policy is present and maintained.
Well, that's a good story.
But I mean, maybe this doesn't require you, but at least it puts it in there, so it's like, it's a policy's important.
Yes.
It doesn't get lost.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's amendable, then that's, I think, symbolically is at least a good thing. And I think concurrently, we should have potentially a policy to share at town meeting if we're, like.
I agree.
We should have that work done, so people can understand what the policy would be, or what the policy is.
And Travis or Ryan, has this idea of really scaling this back to just be about authority, is that something you've run by council?
Yeah, they, they have looked at this, and I've discussed it with them, and they're, they're fine with it as, you know, as truncated.
Good.
And I was commenting to Travis that I went back and looked at our existing bylaws, and that's also seems to be in, in agreement with how, in general, our bylaws are written currently. You don't, you see fairly brief authoritative descriptions for different roles, something like this would be an exception within the bylaw in its full form, so I think it's consistent with our existing approach to bylaws.
Yep, agreed.
So do we need to take a vote on this, or can we just agree that we're all in favor?
We gotta, we gotta talk about 3.3.2, but I guess we did.
No, we did, I think we're all, we're all in agreement that we prefer the second option that's gonna require a special act, and we would truncate, we would cut it at 3.3.4 is eliminated through the end of it, which is 3.3.13, but Kate had suggested that we change 3.1, 3.3.13, make it 3.4, 3.3.4, sorry.
Yes, okay, we know what you're talking about.
And, and what did you, exactly the language and?
Town administrator shall perform his, or their duties as directed by the select board and presented in their policy handbook, or I don't know.
Board pursuant to.
Pursuant to, yeah, I mean.
Town administrator should perform its duties as directed by the select board pursuant to policies, select board policies.
Select board, yeah, select board policies.
Just direct, just put a bookmark in there for the policies.
Yeah, the town council will be able to draft this much better.
Okay.
Maybe we, I don't know if we name policies, maybe we.
We, at one point, we did go through policies. Where are we with policies these days, Ryan?
It's a whole other.
Finance policies?
No, no, the finance policies, I know, our, our select board policies, we had started at some point a couple of years ago.
Soon as we get a break, we will start adding them again.
Okay, so, but this would be the first policy to be put in there, and we would, we'd like to have that probably, and, and a lot of these, 3.7 through 3.12 and stuff, will be in that policy book.
Yep.
Along with, you know, what I would say is probably our job description for the.
Yep.
Plus, things that we've added along the way as responsibility, you know.
Yep.
Responsibilities.
That should be a priority for this.
Yeah, okay. So, so I think that the next step would be if we just kind of, I don't know, maybe we vote, but to, as a board, to agree to this, I can then have it, you know, edited as we just discussed, I'll, I'll run it by council one more time just to quickly look at our new language, as you said, that they probably will tweak it a little bit. If you're comfortable with their language that it comes up with, unless you wanna see it at another meeting, I would like to just then take that, using their language, get it out to you all, and then we start socializing it.
Sure.
Sure.
Does that work?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so we all on board, I don't, I don't know, do we need to take a motion on it, or?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, I will approach it that way, and I will send it back, not only to council, but then, once I get it, I'll send it to all of you as a final, and we'll go from there.
Makes me very happy.
And Travis, I think it would also be helpful to sort of suggest where, which bodies, which committees, how we're gonna socialize it, and if there's some preliminary idea about who is gonna take responsibility for, you know, organizing a discussion with various bodies.
Communication plan.
Yes, well, my, my initial, thanks Barney, my initial reaction is we all have liaison, you know, committees that we, you know, are, are to report to and back and forth, and I would ask that you just go to those committees and, and, you know, ask the chair, maybe, you know, forward it to the chair and say, "We're, you know, select board is in favor of this and wants to, you know, get your feedback and support."
Do we wanna schedule, or offer to schedule time in future agendas and a rough thing of when people could come and meet with us?
I think that's a maybe better idea.
You mean, have them come here?
If they invite them, if they want to discuss it, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know about that, cuz I think it's, you know, it's, it's hard for some people that are on a committee, and then we ask them to, you know, to plan to come another night to meet with us.
I was thinking.
At least for some of them, I, I think it might be more politically savvy to, for the liaison to that committee to ask if they could have some time on an upcoming agenda to talk about this bylaw.
I, I think we should do this like what the town meeting study committee has done. They've, they've actually taken their presentation from group to group to group, this was the same presentation to every single group.
Fair enough.
I've seen it about five times now, and I think that's what we should do with this. If we, I think this is very sensitive and very important, and I think it's important that we all go.
With the same, with the same message?
With the same message to everything, and that we go as a body.
So, Kate, I'm gonna work on some, I think a presentation would be more kind of a, we don't have charts and graphs for this, but more of a bullet point type presentation that I will work on, and if you'll help me out with that, cuz you have some history with this too, I'll, I'll do something, and then, is, or is it my creating a?
You just created a group by saying that.
Okay, well, then I don't have to go that direction, I can just do it, just not involve, but I'll, as part of my, what I said I'd do before, I will go to town council, and I will come up with some bullet points that I think are the, you know, the, should be the, the talking points for a consistent presentation, and then if each of you would go take that to your boards, that'd be fun.
Well, as I said, I think this entire board should be taking it to the boards, not just one individual.
I, I don't know if we, I don't know if.
There's only, there's really only.
Well, probably the boards that are.
Three or four that have.
Direct impacted, right? I mean, like, I could, I feel comfortable bringing this to the school committee and talking about it.
Yeah.
Cuz I don't.
Cuz it's not gonna have a real impact.
Right, so I don't think it's.
The data is getting awareness to our community, which is what we want.
Yeah.
That's fine, I think in other cases, we may wanna.
But there are several boards that this will directly impact.
That's need board to board.
That's why.
So that's what you're suggesting is having a.
Well, let me say, you know, and I, you've, you've seen my little memo I sent to you guys, or you at least, on, we're town meeting study committees, but we're, one of our recommendations is that anybody who has an article also has a communications plan, so eat your own dog food. It's us, right? So, that communication plan, I don't think we should be prescriptive here. One of the other recommendations, which Mr. McLean has taken on for shortly, is that we close the warrant early, and gives us plenty of time to do that, so, to me, it's a blend of going to these committees, and I don't think, unless you wanna get pelted with eggs and tomatoes, I think we need to go, you know, as a board, and have an open discussion.
That's why.
Separately, though, there's a whole lot of social media and other things we should assemble, what other towns do, you know, what's best practice, da, 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 I mean, we should have a whole plan, in my opinion, to make sure not just the boards, but our constituents, you know, understand why we're doing what we're doing, and hopefully support.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be.
Well, could I offer just a quick comment here?
Yes, Barney.
Thanks. I think, I actually think there might be two stages to this, and we talked about it this way early on, when we were looking at whether or not we wanted to choose the option that would require a special act of the legislature, and we know that there are three boards that are gonna particularly have, that this will change their relationship with their employee or employees, and so, you know, when we talked about this originally, we said, "Let's make sure that we arrange for some portion of the select board to go meet with those boards early on, before we've finalized what we want to put on the warrant, and have a discussion." Not, "This is what we're doing," but here is, here is what we're proposing, and, you know, why we're proposing it, and we wanna get your feedback, and it seems to me that is, that's a stage we wanna do first, and then the second stage is what you're describing, David, which is, we've got the, you know, we've got the language we want, it's, it's been finalized, and now we're going to figure out our communications plan to have it go, you know, as far as we can make it go, and the reason I say that is because, you know, when we talked about this early on, we said, you know, strategically and politically, this is going to be pretty significant for some boards, and, and that we, it would, it would be a good idea to bring them in before everything has been finalized, and, and get their feedback.
I, I think that that's a great idea, Barney, I appreciate that approach, and, and I think, I mean, I didn't articulate it well enough, but I was hoping we would socialize it as our liaisons, and then, you know, I, I think that's a great approach.
It's too much asking, yeah.
So, so it's a liaison and just, no, but as a, Barney, do you think that that's appropriate? Is it, again, we just, we ask the liaisons on the select board of your committees just to, to socialize it, to go and to ask, or are you suggesting something else?
No, I, that's exactly what I was suggesting, and if, 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 you know, if we wanna suggest that two members, the liaison plus another member of the select board go, just so it's, you know, two people to hear their, the feedback, I, I think that's a perfectly good way to do it, too.
I think that would be helpful for certain boards in particular.
Yeah, yeah.
The reason I'm sort of, you know, I'm the liaison to two of them, right? John, you're not pushing me out there by myself, sorry.
I will, I will plan to go, I will plan to work with you on that, or if anyone else wants to. Or maybe Barney, I don't know, you and I.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more than happy to, you know, be a partner with somebody, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe we just, so if we're gonna run this by council, then maybe we set a timeframe, that we wanna try to have that back to the council as soon as we can, that, and then maybe in January, right, we're trying to do these limited preliminary conversations.
I have a question about, I actually wrote in my, in my diabetes memo here, the planning board employee is actually your employee, right?
No.
It was not?
No. It's an elected board.
It's an elected board.
They voted to delegate authority to me.
They already did, okay, there you go. I'm happy to go do that. I'm, I'm supporting you, I would have a joint, there's one board in particular, I would have a joint meeting.
I would, I would, absolutely.
To go to, socialize it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Barney, what do you think of that?
I, I know, yeah, I think, yes, I think that might be wise, one board in particular.
Yeah, well, it's, I think all the boards should be treated the same way, and all of the, we should visit all of the boards.
Well, let me, I wanna challenge that one, again, when, when we did our little town meeting, study committee thing.
And you went to all of the boards.
We did, but we had three tiers. Tier one, you guys and a couple others, were joint meetings, where we felt there was enough richness of dialogue that people should be able to deliberate. Tier two was we went in person, but just like you're saying, one or two people to a meeting, and tier three was we just presented what we're working, it's informational, here's the information, it's all right, cuz there's a lot of boards and committees, that's all.
I, I got that, but I'm only talking about the boards.
The tier ones, yes, the tier ones were, were joint meetings.
That's all I'm talking about.
We said treat everybody equally.
The other ones, the other.
You mean, treat, treat the affected boards equally.
Exactly.
Or at least offer to treat them equally.
Offer the, right.
They don't need to have a meeting.
All right, would you be willing to allow me to just send you a memo of what I'd like you to do?
Yep.
And we'll go from there.
Absolutely.
All right, is that good, Barney?
Yep, sounds good.
Great, all right, moving right along, so we have consensus on at least where we're headed, maybe. All right, we've done, oh, financial policy amendment approval.
Oh, oh, yeah.
A little late on that, sorry.
That's okay.
It's okay, so the, the, this amendment started with the staff because of some things that popped up once this policy was implemented.
Why would you sign these?
Which is to be expected. It went to the finance team, and it was, it was deliberated heavily, so the finance team is mostly staff with a couple of invited volunteers, and then it went to the finance committee for a couple iterations, so this has been, this has been looked at, but your input is necessary and your approval is obviously necessary. So there's three things that I'd like to discuss. The first is mileage, so we had a policy discussion about this, and this board went back and forth, so the finance committee about where does mileage, business mileage start?
And it went back.
Originally, we said it's from your home of record to wherever you're going, no, it's from the town hall to wherever you're going, just to make it simple. So the unions pushed back on this, and we talked to council, et cetera, they said that it would be, this police union in particular, said it would be a violation of their ethics to say that they, they would be reimbursed from X to Y, and ethics matter, and policing, ethics matter everywhere. So, we took another look at it, and we, we, meaning all of those boards and committees and people combined, said that, okay, here is, here is a more succinct and clear definition to be considered. So first, that business mileage is when you use a personal vehicle as part of business travel, and that it only really matters on days where you're regularly scheduled to work, in terms of commuting miles, et cetera. So the, the idea would be, and this, this has been tested, too, that if it's your commuting day, wherever you were going for training, et cetera, you would take out your regular commute from that calculation, and if it was a non-work day where you weren't commuting, then you would just get the full mileage, and that's it. So, pretty simple, and we think clear for everybody. The reason why we tried to do the one-for-one was just to make it a faster processing, but we think this is, in conversations with everybody, more fair.
All right.
So that's number one. The second part of that was certain employees regularly use their vehicle, so the, the old formula, many decades ago, was any town employee would have an employee have a vehicle, and they obviously went away with that because of, because of cost. So, picture Al, who, the town wouldn't run without Al, Al Foot, he goes from police station to here, to the school, and just bounces back and forth in his car, so by policy, he would have to print out the map and write down every time he did mileage. Same thing with part-time inspectors, the assessor, et cetera, people who regularly use their vehicle and bounce around. So we thought it would make more sense, rather than all of that processing time and employee time, which, which I do think is a waste of funds and time, that these employees would just get regular stipends, and the way we calculated these was, we took a five-year average of the employee, we would grant them that as a monthly mileage stipend only to be paid per month, in case they leave employment, et cetera, and this would be verified again with a new five-year rolling average every year. So that's the second piece. Third piece to this policy was the idea of reimbursement for meals, particularly employees that are staying overnight, overnight conferences, et cetera, there's only a few of us that do this. So the, a lot of discussion on this, but the end result was that there would be an authorized per diem rate for anyone who was traveling based off the locality, using the USGA's per diem rate for that location, and it would be reimbursable up to that rate with the submission of receipts, so to make it more clear. So to make it more clear, if Boston's per diem is seventy-four dollars a day for all meals, breakfast, lunch and dinner, you would submit receipts for your day up to that seventy-four dollar rate and that's what you'd be reimbursed for. If your conference, et cetera, includes meals, then that, then this wouldn't apply. So it's only for those conferences where you're on your own and you need to be reimbursed. It's not for day trips or, or day trainings, et cetera, that would just be your regular lunch receipt if you went to lunch. And that are, those are the, the three significant changes.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So on uh business mileage, which is, I don't know, on page fifty-eight? Business mileage for certain employees that regularly use their personal vehicle. Who are those employees and how many? Is that kind of where we are with our current policy? Will this change the, that number?
It could, we have a list that I can share with you. It is all the assistant inspectors, the assessing department, Sylvia or the conservation agent in particular, these are all by position. And then the custodial and maintenance staff is, are the people who regularly travel around town.
Okay, I'm gonna use specific examples though, and I know I'm not calling out people, but I'm just using. So we have a sustainability coordinator who may go look at multiple buildings to evaluate them. She drives throughout town, is that charged back?
No, that would be, she would have to submit mileage.
Cause she doesn't do it often.
She's not regularly.
But I'm saying it's kind of subjective, like how, how do you, you know, how do, it is, it's up to you basically to decide that.
Authorization, part two, I guess.
Okay, I'm just kinda, I wanna understand how, how it goes, so.
So in my, in my definition, you, you'd have to be doing this as part of your job description weekly, if not daily. So Sarah, when she does move around to Sarah's position, I hate to use the people's names.
No, I, um, right, or, this is one example. Or, you know, the assessor going around, obviously, he would be.
Yes.
But if the assessor's assistant does two houses, you know?
So we're, and you should rate us on this, but we're pretty judicious, so if Frank does travel, he does either with Brian or in conjunction with someone else, or he's given mileage if he's made to use his own vehicle, but we try not to make him use his own vehicle.
Just wanna understand how you're coming up with it.
I'm also not a person, although I do a lot of travel around town, that would be authorize this. I do not regularly do it in a consistent way. I do go to a lot of things, but I wouldn't be receiving a monthly stipend. Unless you change my contract.
Funny you mention that. All right, um, non-reimbursable expenses, my other question was Massachusetts sales tax is non-reimbursable.
Why would that be?
It's because you're a nonprofit and they don't pay sales tax, so you can't reimburse it.
Well, they do, they don't claim that exemption when they buy a meal and there's a tax on it.
Right, so why is it?
No, I agree with you.
So it's sales tax, nothing else, so you cannot, the town gets, uh, doesn't have to pay sales tax.
Right, if you buy something, maybe it should be clarified because, to me, a meal tax is still a sales tax, it's just, so you should.
No, meals tax is a meals tax.
Yeah, it's not the sales tax.
And lodging tax, so you're saying sales taxes, buying like a widget, let the town buy it and use their exemption.
Sure, and we get, we believe it or not, we flag this a lot.
Okay.
So we have almost eliminated all personal use of credit card for this type of reason. So we don't think it's fair the employee has to pay the tax, but we also absolutely will not pay it.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
Most pushback on this, a lot of Carlisle employee, employees were processing their own reimbursements and buying things cause of convenience or, and no fault of theirs, but we've almost eliminated all of it. It doesn't make everyone happy, just letting you know.
That's how you, financial controls.
Right, that's good.
Yeah.
So one of our biggest risks, so we don't wanna, we wanna eliminate it.
Agreed. I'm fine with this, anyone else? Barney, did you have any comments, questions?
She's not.
Hearing none?
Still there.
We can move on.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, all right, well, we, I think we could move to.
Sorry, yes, it all looks fine to me, thanks.
Okay, sorry Barney, I know you're, no.
No problem, no, no, I was, I just had muted just for general purposes and forgot.
So I moved to approve the amended employee expense reimbursement policy and procedures as included in the packet.
Second.
All right, any further discussion, seeing none, do a roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Truel, aye.
Great. All right, I think we are on to the TA report.
Yes, we are.
All right, I'd like to give my town administrator report. As you know, we launched our first successful podcast, we have advertised this service. Many of you, your voices were in the initial podcast with your voting and you, and you will be regularly. This joins our print, email and social media efforts, is a way to deliver information to residents.
For you asked?
For people who are looking to subscribe to our podcast, which we recommend, it is the Carlisle connection on Apple Podcasts and Spotify. And we also have accounts with Facebook, Twitter, X, Instagram, LinkedIn. You can receive email notification, notifications and we have a newsletter, so.
Does all get you to the podcast, all those sources?
All of those get the same information we blast out when we blast information. The podcast is limited to this report and then a, every other week, the staff will be doing something. To include, we just did a winter help video that we put on YouTube for residents to see, that will become a podcast as well. So just another way to share that information.
Do we know how many hits we've had so far?
We don't.
Is there a way of knowing or?
Eventually, yeah.
Okay.
Probably two to three million-ish.
Two to three million-ish.
So fund the, the next fire station.
Coffee hour will be held here at town hall, first time I'm doing that in the parlor room, just to give a different venue for, for people to come in. It's a good opportunity to ask questions, share ideas and provide feedback. I always get one or two folks that come in and I always learn something from the community, so we encourage people to stop by. I can also have Zoom going at that time, if you just wanna meet with me virtually and don't wanna make an appointment, I'm available. The first floor remodel here, moving on to town hall news. We should have a final decision in design based off of conversations with the town clerk's office in the COHS, so more to come on that. For HR updates from the assistant town administrator and HR director Aubrey, you heard about us adding Jennifer to our team as the transportation and services coordinator. She brings a ton of experience, fifteen years' experience, and we're excited to have her join the COHS and add to their resilience. We also have offered a town clerk position to a very good candidate. We're not ready to announce this publicly as we're still going through the HR process, but that will be an appointment at your December tenth meeting for those who are following along with the town clerk appointment process. We will have the candidate come and meet you, to, in a meet and greet type way, so that you can meet the candidate before you appoint them. Still looking for candidates with our DPW, it's a long-term conversation, it's gonna be a long-term problem, just making you aware of that. We'll also be advertising for a public safety administrative assistant role. This is gonna combine the administrative assistants for police, fire and communications, a good long-term strategy turning three part-time positions into a full-time position. This was discussed with both chiefs and is, the only reason we're considering it right now is cause Susan Carrier, who has been doing more than her share in this role, is retiring. We cannot replace her with just a part-time employee. This will be budget neutral and will allow a lot more HR and financial control into our satellite departments. Some auditing, tax rate and budget performance news. You'll receive two important reports in December at your meeting. First, an analysis of FY twenty-four's budget and how revenue and expenses contribute to the free cash certification. And then also an overdue FY twenty-five Q one report. Not an excuse, but we have been working to not only close the year in the tax rate, but also the chart of accounts, which has confused some of the reporting, we didn't wanna give it to you half-baked, so you're gonna get that. Also, my working group, which my friend to my left here is a part of, met with Markham to kick off the FY twenty-four external audit. They went over goals with the, with the firm and they should be getting a completed first draft of financial statements and management letter to the town in January and to this board in February. For a budget update, departments are continuing to submit their requests. I'm gathering all of that into a presentation for you on December tenth. Also, we're recommending that tonight, and if you're willing to vote on this, that the board open the annual town meeting warrant immediately. This is consistent with the town meeting study committee's recommendation. And we're asking you to close it on Fe- February eleventh to allow for that communications plan process that the TMSC recommended. So if you're willing to do that, I would ask that you do that now.
Moved to open the warrant of the twenty twenty-five annual town meeting to be held no earlier than May fourth with an anticipated closing date of February eleventh, of, of closing of the warrant.
Second.
All right, any discussion Barney, anything?
Nope.
Okay, um, we'll do a roll call vote on that.
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Truel, aye.
You are now all podcast famous. In your packet is uh Green Communities Report, so Sarah, as I keep saying, just a tremendous asset to the community. I wanted her to summarize the Green Communities program as we move towards climate leader, so you understand it. There's also gonna be some discussions at the MFC about finalizing our Green Communities grant monies. And I wanted you aware of everything that was going on before those came through. So some quick highlights, Carlisle complies with all six Green Communities criteria currently. I found it interesting that the following five buildings account for seventy-three percent of Carlisle's municipal output, CPS, DPW, library, town hall and police station, with CPS being ten times larger than the second. So the, by far the largest energy producer in the community is CPS. Our energy consumption is supported by less than a percent of renewable energy. Really, the only way to impact that would be to switch to the green option, which would increase costs, but we thought we would point that out.
Well, I just wanna say though, to be fair, the schools also have ten times more people in them and are used kind of more intensively than a lot of the other spaces, so just.
I think Sarah and I wanted to highlight that to you for potential grant opportunities as they come down.
Okay.
How we can best use the climate leader monies for potential projects.
That'd be good.
It would be helpful to have, you know, one of our goals this year was to environmental stewardship, is to the environmental sustainability committees to develop a metric to evaluate the costs and benefits of economic and climate impacts, costs and benefits. And so, you know, when I looked at this, I think this is really informative, but, you know, what is the biggest bang for the buck? For how we're going to, to reduce the, you know, the, or get the, get the grant money, but also that, that offsets and can get, get us to those goals faster. And I noticed that further down in the, in Sarah's memo where she had taken the, I don't have it right now, I have to pull it up. But it has, I think it's in here, she, she had the, the budget or, or, yeah. Right here, the, the Green Communities, the project status. And, and we have certain things like the Carlisle Public School, the municipal, the fire station and various, you know, variable speed compressor and everything in the plan. But I was just curious, what is the biggest bang for the buck? Because maybe at some point you start to make decisions that you say, oh, well, both of these things need to be done, but we don't have the money, but if one of them gets a grant or something like that. I mean, I don't know, just a, a metric that we can use so that we can get to our goals faster, if that's what we're trying to do.
I thought they're work, I thought Christina's on, I thought the ESC was working on that.
Christina, if you wanted to chime in, be happy to hear about your efforts on that. But I'm catching you off guard, so I don't, no, it's okay.
I'll check in, I mean, I'm the liaison, but I, my impression was they're working on that.
Okay, good.
I have a note to get you, to get you that answer.
Okay.
The Historical Society has requested a building permit waiver. This comes from Larry Sorley, who's on the Historical Society. It's less than five hundred dollars to the permit, not the work, to repair and replace deteriorated trim and sash on the healed house. Building Commissioner John Mativier is aware of the request, he's in favor of it, but he wanted to make sure the board approved it for policy. So if you're willing to consider that now, we would appreciate it.
Make the motion and we can discuss it. Move to waive building permit fees for the Carlisle Historical Society for applied permits to repair, replace deteriorated trim and sash at six ninety-eight Concord Street, Carlisle, Mass. oh one seven four one.
Second.
Any further discussion on it?
They, they're nonprofit.
Besides being a nonprofit, they're also housing a lot of the town's artifacts.
Yes, artifacts. I just wanna be sure that we have our ducks in a row and stuff, so I have no problem with it.
Okay, um, we'll take a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Snell, aye.
Truel, aye.
Moving on to capital project updates, our culvert analysis will complete this week with the last fifteen. We also have started a process of scrubbing, initial scrubbing of grants that are possible for both our roads and our culverts as a result of this plan. So this plan not only categorizes things for you and feeds the capital report, but is also the beginning of our analysis of potential funding to help speed up the capital plan, federal, state and, and local or regional grants. The elevator maintenance project launched last week with a coordination meeting. We met with the engineers, the construction documents are starting to be built, so this will, this will meet our timeline for town meeting vote.
One million dollars.
Yeah.
There's been a hiccup with the moving of the cupola, so I don't, at the Greeno Barn D construction site. It was just way bigger than people thought, so I don't have a good answer for you, just to let you know that there is, there is no answer right now as we're exploring alternatives for the kiosk. Anything from another option to, to abandoning the kiosk idea are in play right now, just because of the size and cost. It will involve a crane and other significant piece of.
Wow.
If you, if you haven't gone to see it yet, I suggest you do, cause it's way bigger than you'd like.
It's big, yeah.
Where is it?
It's at Greeno.
At the, right by the Greeno dam.
Oh, it's, it's still there?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can't move it, so it's still there. Uh, two people have tried so far.
Way to know how big it was.
The dog park project, there's a.
Takes one, two people to move it.
Report in your, there is a project report in, attached to this report for your review. Also in, toward the fire department's new, newly installed bay heaters. This was a product that was led by Lieutenant David Newman, did a great job, came in under budget and it's gonna provide heat, heat for the tankers to keep the, the water warm. I don't know how better to describe that.
Keep it from freezing.
It also offers a training space for, for the, for the firefighters. Building, quick building construction project updates. So CMS and town council have approved final contract for OPM services. We'll start to work with CMS and Silver and Swartz to finalize these contracts. However, we're working on consolidating funding for the project and collaborating with Friends of Leasing Public Library and the library trustees. We're also working with recommendations from the town auditor and council to make sure that this process is correct. So simply put, we're recommending that the Friends gift the money to the town so the town can run the construction project and not the Friends because of a significant liability. I don't think anyone is in disagreement, but we are having those conversations to make sure they're finalized. We talked about the police station renovation a lot. The only other news I have to add is we did sign the formal contract with CMS, so. They were willing to come with an unsigned contract, but they were here legitimately tonight. Some upcoming discussions include town hall hours, climate resilient policies and your meeting with Representative Cataldo next month. We are assembling a document based on all your comments, we just don't wanna ambush the representative, so if you have any more, just send them to us and we'll make sure they get into the document. There are several rotary signs that I am informing you about. Finally, staff recognition. As I mentioned earlier in this report, Susan Carrier has announced her retirement from the police department after years of dedicated service in her admin role, including the overseeing, the trans, transition from Chief Fisher to Chief Amendola, which was no small feat. Our current chief consistently refers to Susan as the department's institutional memory, ensuring operations run smoothly and efficiently. The finance team has relied on Susan's expertise to navigate policy issues and plan for future initiatives aimed at retaining officers. Also, understanding the historical significance of union contracts and other significant details. Simply put, the police department owes much of its current success to Susan's contributions and she's worked with the new chief to try and clarify policy and make sure we're set up for the future. Her knowledge and professionalism will be deeply missed and we hope to capture as much of her invaluable insight as possible in the remaining months to ensure our transition to this new position that will be new to the town, but nice and set up because of people like Susan. The report finalizes with some dates of interest to include many holidays coming up, which I hope everyone enjoys. And if I was a decent person, I would've said happy Thanksgiving to the board at some point in this report, so happy Thanksgiving.
Ryan, I have a quick question for you on something you've mentioned earlier, is this a good time?
Yep.
Okay, um, you talked about the first floor reorganization and sort of new spaces for the COHS. So I heard, during our interviews actually for the town clerk, I heard that there'd been some changes from what I originally thought that was gonna be, and I'm just interested. And I'm just interested in why that changed. So initially, as I recall, the discussion was about the space over by the Town Clerk's Office that would be available to the COHS was going to include some sort of a, you know, small meeting space or, you know, place where folks could come in and just have a seat and they'd have coffee and tea and, you know, if somebody just wanted to hang out for a little while, sort of a mini trial of this idea of a drop-in center. But I understand from Carol that that's been changed and there's going to be two, you know, separate offices over there for staff. So I'm just interested in how that change came about and what the thinking is.
So the two areas that are being discussed are the current Council on Aging office and then excess space in the Town Clerk's office. So we reconfigured the Town Clerk space so that as you walk in, everything to the left is a customer desk with a little bit of a waiting area. And then, you're correct Barney, that there would be two offices there for employees and some waiting space for people looking for social services or programming support. The Transportation Service Coordinator, who was appointed tonight, would work in the current office and the space that you're talking about Barney would be in that office. So a little bit of a walk-in space, coffee and other availability to quote-unquote hang out or to move from there in here to the clerk's space. We don't think you could accomplish the socializing in the space that is across the way.
Okay.
Even though it's not a ton of space, we do think it'll be pretty open once we move the desk and take away the cubicles in that corner office. While you're talking about it, I've been talking a lot with the COHS about space utilization based off your conversations and have asked them to work up for me what they think the services are required for the next five to 10 years in case the building decision is pushed that far out or maybe it's never made. So that we can accomplish what they need to do over the next five to 10 years and we can make a proper recommendation on space. Whether that is what we're currently configuring or some other interim stuff. But we would like to tie it to service need and not, and not want, like discussions we had with the Fire Station tonight and the Police Station previously.
Our draft agenda for the meeting on December 10th contemplates spending a little bit of time talking about the Council on Aging Human Services Community Center discussion. And so we're hopeful to kind of determine which direction the Select Board would like to take that in going forward at that time.
Finally Barney.
Okay, thanks.
The way we're considering the space too thinks about the future, so if the COHS was to leave here, what would be left for us to use and how? Considering that as well.
Yep, yep, that's my, okay, thanks.
That is my report.
The other thing I mentioned on the upcoming agenda for the 10th, you know, we've got Simon Cataldo coming in. Got a budget presentation, it's a joint meeting with FinCom, and then the Town Meeting Discussion, well, the COHS Discussion I mentioned, but Town Meeting Discussion. I think is that, that'll be determining how we want to pursue the recommendations of the Town Committee. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, we met, I guess.
Yeah, liaison.
So we met with you guys on short notice, I appreciate you making the time. We then met, we also met two more committees, we had two more to do. We finished that outreach. So everybody of significance has been consulted with the notable exception of one board that never bothered to respond. We can't figure out which board that is. And then we met again as a group and basically thought, you know, what is most important to do right now? Which was summarized kind of already, which is set the, start the warrant and end it early, which you've done, thank you. And then number two is, we recommend, and you've recommended and the other boards have consistently, that we try a Sunday meeting and see. And then there's a bunch of things that will flow from that. And then the third thing is that we also recommend that, you know, all the sponsors of warrants develop a communication plan. So those are the three like level things that we will talk about on the 10th. Now what we are going to do, and it won't be by the 10th because our meeting will be after that. We are going to now go back through and make kind of a total list of all the recommendations that we've gotten and try to figure out which ones we think we should incorporate and then what do we have to do. Some of those are very simple things like Wayne, you know, we talked about just have a list of all the sponsoring. Any board that supports a warrant article will just have it on the screen. We don't have to wait for them to shuffle up to the microphone and say their name and do all that. I mean, there's a couple, you know, there's 30 seconds right there. There's a lot of little things just to kind of, consistent with streamlining the process. We can do a lot of that on our own. Then there's some larger things, and then there's a whole pile of logistics that we should consider. We don't have to do it on the 10th. But as we move forward, if we're going to have a Sunday meeting, if we're going to have people out in the playground, if we're going to have a food truck, we have things to do. Whether that's the daytime government that should do it or we should do it, you know. And furthermore, since we have offered this prescription of a communications plan, we're going to take it on to sort of template. What is a communications plan? What are the elements? Try to standardize the format, make sure it's in the website. All looks like, when people go to get it, all the information looks fairly consistent. So there's a lot of little things that we're going to then pivot towards and we'll work with you guys to hopefully make that a success.
Great. So on the 10th, we'll talk a little bit more.
Yeah, so it's a short, I think.
Okay, great. Well, we're, I think at the ending stages of our meeting, okay.
I have a liaison from Board of Health. I think they'll be coming to us with a warrant article, possibly, I don't think they're going to come. They're considering whether they'll come with another mosquito, either surveillance or spraying or some sort of new program. They're looking into it. I did tell them that, you know, we're closing the warrant pretty, you know, early, so they're going to do it. They need to get on their, you know, horse and get it coming. But I think that might be coming.
After our last meeting, I attended the Carlisle School Committee meeting just to give them a, kind of a condensed version of the presentation we got from both to review our Select Board financial goals that we articulated and to give them kind of a condensed version of the presentations Ryan gave to us on the building projects and the other, the forecast model looking out. So I think that was helpful. And then following that, Jim O'Shea presented the first draft of the administration budget, which is 5.2% was the initial budget then. That's for, just telling you, it's going to be a challenging year. That's for a level service budget that includes no additional staff. The cost drivers are primarily special education, both in the cost of out-of-district tuitions and an increased number of students requiring out-of-district starting next year. Combined with a reduction in our Circuit Breaker grant because last year we had less students, so our yearly expense are, so there's a lag there. And also transportation costs. Those are the big cost drivers. So I gave some, I'm sure they're going to be working with FinCom and respectively, you know, I tried to paint the picture of the budget challenges and, you know, I just said, just be prepared to answer the question of what are the trade-offs required if it's not 5.2%, if it's 4%, if it's three and a half. And so that'll be, that'll be an ongoing discussion. It's a challenge. We're seeing the same challenges you're reading about in the paper with the teacher strikes and what the communities are trying to deal with in terms of increasing costs that are putting pressure on the operating budget, which again, it's, these are.
I know, but then when I hear about the teacher, the teacher strikes, they're striking for some things that our teachers have had for years and years and years already.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not comparing it to the actual strikes. I'm just in the, what they're talking about, the cost pressures on schools through some of these, especially out-of-district tuitions, which have gone up 14% in the last year.
That would be nice to have actually broken out and see what the rest of our budget looks like.
And I, yeah, and I did, you know, the other comment was let's model out what the next five years looks like in terms of, especially that. Because if presuming, and I will add, the 5.2% includes applying the entirety of their fee account to offset next year's expenses.
What account?
The student fee account.
Oh, okay.
So that, there's a $250,000 offset that gets it down to 5.2%. But again, theoretically, you'd have Circuit Breaker increase kicking in the next year, like, so the request I had to them was let's model it out. Let's understand the flow of monies, because we know special education can be volatile and there's the lag.
Well, if you have, I mean, yes, if they have incoming students with identified needs, those incoming students are in the early grades. Then they got a pretty steady diet of that tuition. So I get that.
But and then part of the challenge is both that and the Circuit Breaker for that isn't kicking until next year and we're seeing a decrease because we had a decrease last year, so.
Right, Circuit Breaker always lags, so it pays you when you don't need it, which is when you go down. It doesn't, it pays you less when you need it.
But it's.
I would, I would like to see the budget though, with the spend out of it, the out-of-district spend out of it. To see what this CPS increases, you know, just by itself.
Yeah, I won't even comment, because it's, the spend alone is almost, is everything, you know, if it weren't for that, it would be your typical like, what we've seen.
But you do have to, just to clarify, I think from my experience, it's really a three-part thing, okay? It's regular ed.
Right.
Then it's special ed inside the district.
Yeah.
Which includes a lot of.
But those are, in their budget, breakout.
Out of the district, right.
There is, that breaks out there. So it's very easy to look at those cost break, well, it's not as easy as understanding what they expect that will look like over the next five years.
I understand, but I also want to be careful not to balance, not to balance the budget on the backs of regular ed.
No, and I.
If we have the same number of students or fewer in regular ed and the price, the cost is still going up 5.2%, I'd like to know then what's driving that, you know.
Again, enrollment's expected to be.
And I'd like to know what the class sizes look like overall and see if this.
They reviewed all that and enrollment's expected to be stable. So again, all that information will be, will be available. It's just, it's going to be, it's, there's, and I think from the region is similar, there's a lot of cost pressures that we're, you know, that are obviously part of the schools. It's going to put pressure, additional pressure on the operating budget.
So there was a time, I mean, obviously we have a regional high school. There was a time in my tenure where one of the problems of the small district we have is that with, and it's also a reason why spend has increased, is there's much more knowledge and assorting of learning styles. So you could be spectrum, that's a big category, but it's like this kind of spectrum, this kind. And so we, you know, we have the, we have the same problem, you know, an analog to like Brian's problem, like small sample size. If you have one kid who has a disorder, you don't have much choice. The make-by decision is out-of-district can serve that child much better. We just can't devote a whole teacher to that. However, Concord may have four of those. And there was a time when that was explored and I wonder if that's also something that they should do.
I raised that point. And I think they, I mean, yeah, there's.
It's problematic because it's two different districts, but.
No, well, case though, there's case.
Yeah. Well, but and, I raised that point and I think Jimmy even said that for parents, there's a higher comfort level sending your kid to, if there's a program at the region, than sending him off to somewhere that's not, so I think these are things that are being discussed. And I just raised this and again, they're at the very beginning of their process, but it's going to be a challenging, these aren't, these, where the increases are coming from are very difficult things to, to cost control.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, I will invite community input as the last. Is anyone in the community? Anyone here present in the room? Crickets. All right, I take a motion to adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
All right.